Good afternoon, everyone. We are in the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 9th. Alkum squamish, east alakumit, claspa homish, owayo meow. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Committee has an agenda in front of them. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. We've got councillor A, secretary councillor Cryer. All those in favor? Post defending motion carries.
That's good.
First up.
Is that any way to start a meeting?
I don't think so. Read one. We have a verbal update from our CIO on the CLIME program.
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. Linda Glende, CEO here at the District of Squamish. Beside me is Catherine Rockendale of Rockendale and Associates. She's been working closely with me on this project. Council has seen this before. The CLIME program stands for Continual Learning Improvement and Benchmarking Program. This is something we started approximately a year ago now. And it's been quite iterative, creative, and a lot of excitement behind it. And so we're here to keep you updated on where we're at. So as a reminder, this is the purpose of the organization. It's really both about building our benchmarking capacity, but ultimately about a culture shift around continual improvement and embracing innovation, which innovates. Continual improvement is council's definition for innovation in our local government. Oops. Focus of the project, not the organization issue. That's why I had to go. So here are the objectives of the program. As I mentioned, the culture of innovation, capacity for benchmarking, and then continual Process mapping. It looks complicated, but it's not. It just takes some time to read it. We originally had a process map with councillor members. It was very linear in nature. And working with the employees and our CLIME champions, who were departmental representatives, came up with this because we want it continual being the operative word. The departmental COG represents the continual application of the CLIME framework to departmental projects. And then that feeds into the overall organizational challenge. And we'll get into where we've landed. But at this point, we are at number seven. We formed the innovation team, and we're launching on addressing that organizational challenge. In the interim, the departments have been working on their own projects, and I will give you some examples shortly.
Okay.
But this is the visual that the staff have come up with to help them understand and follow along on the process. This is one of our...
Can you make it bigger?
I don't know if I can. Unfortunately.
We can give you a hard copy of it. I didn't realize it was going to come out.
Isn't there a button you can push to make it bigger?
A button?
It should be a button. How big are those?
Nope.
Not in PowerPoint.
If I put it into PDF, which I hadn't done. But this went out to the employees. And on the very far left side is the initial CLIME concept, which was in June of 2017, actually. That's when we went out to RFP for consultants on a benchmarking program. September 2017, further into that red line as well, was where we started meeting with the employees in workshops to create this program. That was really involved with councillor members in terms of getting all of the staff involved in solidifying what the program looked like, which has been great because employees own this. It's their program. And in 2018, that's when we formed the team with the CLIME champions, those that represent the departments, and they were working with each of their departments. It wasn't meant to create work. It was take a project you're already doing and apply the CLIME framework to that, essentially with continual learning and integrating how do we continue to improve. In April of 2018, that's a typo. In April of 2018, all of the CLIME champs got together, and Catherine helped to facilitate. And what we did was a gallery walk. And Catherine, do you want to explain a bit about that?
Yeah. Essentially, a gallery walk is each of the departments basically did a presentation briefly on their project, what it was they selected, what were some of the successes they'd had, and what were some of the challenges they faced? And then what were the questions that came out of that in terms of integrating what they'd learned into ongoing work, either on that project that they were doing? Because some departments actually did a very short-term kind of project, something that they were launching, a process or a new initiative. Others applied it to projects or processes that were very long-term in terms of changing the culture and actually shifting something that was going to take several years. And each of the departments essentially went and they did a one-page handout. Interestingly enough, I don't know if councillor members, back when you were first, four years ago, think way back. We did, I facilitated orientation for council when you first were elected. And we did a gallery walk as part of that to bring you up to speed to what each of the departments were doing. So it's a similar process that basically quickly allows people to see what are the different departments doing and what were the key takeaways? And then we had a whole group discussion around how those takeaways and learning that they had go across departments within the organization to inform and do some cross-departmental collaboration in terms of addressing challenges they were facing.
So the purpose of that ultimately was to come up with what is an organizational challenge, or what, how, should we, we should pick one that we can address as an organization. So that's the larger COG. So we've got departments continually improving. As an organization, what do we need to target? What bubbled up out of that meeting, which was really productive, was the idea of competing priorities. A lot of employees talk about workload, busy, and we're growing, and resourcing. But in addition to, sorry, getting ahead, in addition to volume, it was really more about competing priorities. And that organizational challenge is about, we have our operational work plans, we have council strategic plan, and then we have reactive customer service issues that come in the door that day. We have development applications wherein, you know, in terms of the market, we can't control that. And how, as a staff, do they deal with those competing priorities? So we certainly didn't have a solution that day. That was the question that came out of it. And that was in June that we solidified that organizational statement. Where we're at today, in September, we just, with the champs, I didn't pick the team, but people, all employees were invited to apply for the innovation teams. And our CLIME...
I think we'll slide through, isn't it?
Yep, our CLIME champions chose them.
It's very much an employee-driven program. Even this time, like how they wanted to convey the process, all the champs, they are the conduits for their department. They go back, they talk to their department and get input on how things are working, what do they see as organizational challenges, and what kind of ideas do they have to address those or approve the operations or approve communication, all those kinds of things.
Yeah. And it was Teri Murray, actually, that created this graphic on her own. Interesting. So interestingly, the employee engagement was something that HR out of the CLIME program launched again. We've done it in the past, but it had lost stamina. And through the CLIME program, realized that this needed to be prioritized, and an employee engagement survey did go out. The question, the amount of work expected of me is reasonable. While graphically, it does appear that a lot of people agree, it's important to know that 24% of our employees disagree or strongly disagree that the workload is reasonable. So the employee engagement is aligning with the organizational issue that's bubbled up. The great thing about this is that it's now provided as a benchmark. So we actually have the measurements as we go through this CLIME organizational challenge to measure.
Not just for this, but because HR, because they added some questions in there around culture and some different things that had come up during the CLIME process, they actually are going to use the employee engagement survey as a key, it's basically a baseline. Now has that and becomes a benchmark that can be used every year.
Were there certain departments that, did we break this down into departments? Yeah, there's departmental measurements as well, but we don't have those today to provide to you as more of a general overview.
But it's more for you to understand which departments are being overly outshod or which departments are staff.
Absolutely.
On it?
Yeah. I mean, I suppose it's obvious that people would think that there, too much work is expected of them, but were there any that thought maybe not enough?
Oh, you can ask that question specifically, Mayor Heisman?
Or that they were just a little bit under capacity, for example? They could have taken more?
Right.
I mean, I know it kind of goes against the grain, but it's a possible answer.
It could have been, yeah. And that's a really good point that we haven't dove into that. My hope is those people signed up for the innovation team and CLIME champs, and I've got all kinds of work that I'm hoping to be able to handle for, but get to consider for future service. So just a graphic. The importance is that this isn't just that workload idea, we're too busy, we're too busy. It's the competing priorities, really, that this is the major challenge. And our hope with CLIME and the employee engagement surveys is this will provide us more empirical ability or empirical measurement on how to improve that. So this is the organizational challenge that came out, and I'll read it because it's a little light. "How might we empower our employees to prioritize competing work demands in order to achieve a realistic workload while delivering outstanding service?" Quite a mouthful, but ultimately, we want to continue to deliver outstanding service and manage those competing priorities. It's a big ask, but that's why we're putting an innovation team together. So this was the advertisement that went out to all employees. And the application had them answer questions based on the following criteria: so willingness to listen to new ideas, a focus on solutions, understanding of the district and our contacts, not afraid to take risks, and they had to provide examples.
So this wasn't, the applicants didn't see this. The CLIME champions that basically represented all the departments used this ranking criteria to evaluate all of the applications that came in. In addition, besides this, they also spoke to the relationships that they had. So each of the departments would say, well, actually, I know, you know, this person works in our department or this, and this has been our experience with this person. They would actually gave kind of an overview to their colleagues about each person in terms of why they thought and why they ranked them in a certain way, in terms of their delivery on other projects, their ability to understand broader District of Squamish departments. So they talked a little bit more about that, and it was a very collaborative meeting. And from that...
So I have yet to send the letters out to the successful applicants. I'll be doing that later today or tomorrow. I don't know if they mentioned this before, but I was not in the room for that meeting. The CLIME champs were very specific that they didn't want...
Linda came and welcomed them, but then they wanted her to leave so that there was no, not that they don't trust her, they just, they wanted, didn't want to influence or to feel pressure, and they wanted to be able to discuss in confidence their colleagues and the choices and why they felt some people were better than others.
Did you get lots of applicants?
This time around, we didn't get a ton, but I wasn't surprised by that. I think as this program gains traction, that more and more people learn about it, want to participate, understand what it is, I think, you know, back to that competing priorities element, is there a lot of people that probably are worried about taking on too much or not know enough about it? But enough that I was really encouraged, and we have a robust team.
And across departments. It's not just all from one department, it's from different departments. And so a really interesting mix, you know, if you look at planning, engineering, operations, like all the people fire, like people came from all over the district. So that was good.
So at this point, given it's our first time through this, I've given it a six-month deadline for solutions. It may be sooner, it depends how much capacity people have to come together. I'll be chairing it to keep the momentum and to lead the meetings. Their goal is solution options, not implementation. So the innovation team will provide recommendations, and then we'll get into next steps around like where we go from there.
And so then part of what they'll be doing, the innovation team, is they'll be a conduit for, because they're going to be reaching back into the departments. So they'll be, the champions will be a conduit for the innovation team to basically do research, arrange, you know, like talk to people about and get input from the different departments in terms of solutions.
Just as a reminder, so the innovation team is tackling that larger COG, so this is the organizational issue. The departmental COG continues to spin, so our change champions will continue to work with their teams. You know, the CLIME is becoming a common frame of reference. We continue to grow that in our, in our culture. Ultimately, the leadership comes from the CIO office to provide the oomph behind it and keep it going. Some examples that we want to share with you that are really exciting, we've seen so far. So Legislative Services, in terms of their project, did a survey to reach out and see people's knowledge of local government. So the community charter, council procedures, what's an FBOI? And the results were interesting and quite telling, and it provided an opportunity for Leg Services to provide more training and more education for our employees. And then now they have that benchmark right there. As we mentioned, CLIME facilitated prioritizing an employee engagement survey, which provides us more measurements. And Communications created a playbook, which departments are indicating that they're using. And this is a great example of cross-departmental work in terms of, it used to be very unhawke. People would walk by Christine's office and say, hey, we're doing capital project, we're starting tomorrow, can you help us out with that? And it got very overwhelming and not consistent, and so this is helping.
And what it also, what this also does, and what I heard from the CLIME champions when we had, when we were having different meetings, was particularly in relation to this, because it has questions, all the departments are now actually going, oh, well, we've never actually considered that in terms of communication or giving that information or sharing that information. So everyone's using the same questions. All the departments are developing the same information. They are recognizing that there are multiple places to actually post the information around different issues, whether it's, you know, a pipe replacement or it's something, a larger initiative, as Linda's mentioned.
So in terms of continually improving this program, there's still lots of room for that, as we're in our first iteration of the COG cycle, is deepening the organizational communication. So one thing we've heard is the CLIME champs, the people applying for the innovation team, they're very aware and knowledgeable about this program. Not everybody is. There's a large, there's a larger staff. And so in an all-staff meeting, I'll be talking about that, and that's something that came out of employee engagement, is that employees want more all-staff meetings. What's been great is the storytelling, and we talked about the framework. So I had an employee who, out of a council meeting, told me this later, was drafting an email to me about, okay, well, I don't know that that went so well, and here's what went wrong, and here's what went wrong, that wasn't so great. And then he deleted it all, and he sent me an email and said, in light of CLIME, here's what happened and here's how we can improve. And when he told me that, that made me feel like, yeah, the culture's shifting. So it's not applied to a large project necessarily, or something we can pull out, but that's what we're trying to achieve, is that way of thinking, and that's really encouraging.
And some of the councillors may have had, I don't know about your interaction with staff in terms of, you know, out in the broader community, but one of the things that, particularly because I've been facilitating many of the departmental meetings, people will share stories around, you know, we were working on this project, and, you know, so-and-so said, oh, you know what, actually, well, the CLIME, in the CLIME thing, we asked these kind of questions, maybe we should bring that. Or, hey, out of the first phase of our CLIME, we actually came up with this process for com, because they were having some conflict in their department, and they basically said, you know, we could probably apply this to this, to this other thing that we're doing. So people are starting to take the learning from the first phase and apply it to other processes and other things that they're doing. And that's some of the storytelling that is being looked at in terms of being sharing, sharing some of those stories on the internal internet page.
Which looks like this and is still a work in progress and will continue to improve. One feedback, or one piece of feedback I did receive is that people still really enjoy the CIO updates, and that will be a way that I can communicate more about the CLIME. I don't know that I'll start putting it in words because it gets too long, but a link where people can access this or a story that's come up, and that will, we'll continue to work on improving that. So in terms of next steps, then, we'll be launching the innovation team in the next couple of days. The CLIME champs, I'll continue to work with them on a regular basis to ensure that they're keeping it alive in their departments. CLIME champs can switch out at any time. We're actually encouraging them to, so we can build that leadership capacity throughout the organization. At this point, as I mentioned, six months, April 30th is the recommendations completion date for the innovation team. If it looks like we've got faster momentum and it's going well quickly, then that's great. I certainly hope to hold that back. Those recommendations will form an action plan to address that competing priorities issue, challenge, and then we'll implement the solution. At that point, COG keeps spinning, the process continues, and we look at organizational challenge number two. Thank you very much.
Any questions from either the audience or the council? I think this is a great start, and I know it's iterative, and it's going to evolve over the years. And this is really about the culture change and creating a mindset of problem solving and innovation within the whole organization. At some point, we're going to want to see if the results are discernible in the community Have you thought about how we may start to benchmark this against things that aren't necessarily internal organizational issues, but the experience that the public has with us too? And I don't know, I don't have to answer that now, but what's this next step? Because ultimately, we're about serving the community. So how do we then start to evaluate the success of this based on the community experience? And there may be obvious approaches to that, that might be more in parts and rec because they're more interfaced with the public and Leg Services, but, and you don't have to answer that now, but maybe present that to the innovation team or the champs and start to think, or how do we benchmark this outside of the organization?
So for clarity, Mayor Heisman, you're referring to the community satisfaction of the services we're providing versus applying this to what's going on outside the community?
Yeah, no, this is, I mean, this is an internal culture-building expression and exercise that hopefully just becomes part of the system. But ultimately, we are, as an organization, we're a service organization who still offers services to communities. So how do we ensure that this internal cultural shift is translating into the experience that our citizens have within the district? And that, I mean, I just, I don't have an answer to it, I just want to sort of put that button here in terms of how do we then start to create those benchmarks to see how CLIME is being successful ultimately in the delivery of services, not just in internal problem solving. Teri?
I just wondered if you could say a little bit more about the benchmarking aspect? So I know we've got industry benchmarks for the wastewater treatment, plants, and operations, but how does that look for development, services, and finance? How does that play out over the long term?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Heisman. It's, the purpose of this program really was to develop a benchmarking culture first because historically, anytime you tried to impose benchmarking and measuring, you know, there was a lack of understanding or fear of it, or just accounting exercise. So this is switching, like shifting that culture. There are areas that are easy to benchmark, public works as an example. In terms of benchmarking against other communities, at this point, the systems out there for us to participate in are quite weak. I shouldn't say that in public, but civic info is doing their best to, to start it. It's sort of in the forming, forming stages. Internal benchmarking really is about how we're improving as opposed to how we compare. And with this program, we're shifting that culture, and to be perfectly honest, we're not there in a lot of areas, but it's certainly on the road out as a goal to get there for measuring timelines, community satisfaction, you know, developing services, but our timelines are really pretty low quality.
And I think that, if you don't mind, Mayor Heisman, the, a lot of the departments, there's the larger innovation team that's, that's focused on this internal piece. A lot of the departments, their projects actually have quite an impact on, on customer service, external-facing things, external-facing service. And some of those departments are identifying, beyond the ones that were mentioned, are identifying sort of baselines. Where could we actually, okay, so if this is where things are at right now, or this is what we learned in terms of rolling out this new machinery or providing this particular service, how could we improve that? And so they are actually looking at that, but it's definitely in the formative stages right now.
Thanks. I really appreciate this work because I think when we came to benchmarking, what we had in mind was, you know, how can we benchmark our services in order to do better communication? But if our staff, exactly as our CIO, that CIO has said, if your staff isn't on board with that culture, it's really difficult to move those processes forward because the things that are easy to benchmark are easy for the community to see, but the things that may be more nuanced take developing that culture in order for people to be on board and notice the things that are in need of measurement. And I think that if we don't organize or, you know, I look at that survey where people feel overloaded with work, and there is no way you can develop a benchmarking program in a culture of innovation where people are feeling overwhelmed. So understanding that is a benchmark. And having a program like this is a benchmark because it allows our staff to be able to communicate those ideas of innovation and move forward. So I appreciate this as well. Having baseline for different processes, it just, it really does take a shift. So I think the community notices by not having our staff be overwhelmed and stressed when they come in to interact with our staff and having better communication tools and doing this sort of work really improves that process. So thank you.
Any questions, council, committee? Anyone in the audience? Yeah, come up to the table and, yeah, just come up to the table. Wait till you sit down before you start talking.
Does the microphone turn to the center of the table?
Thanks.
Ah, okay. You're too fancy for me. Do I need to say my name?
You don't, it's helpful. Great, you just say I'm Alana.
Alana Gillis. What really struck me around one of the projects that you had, the Legislative Services, the sort of understanding, the knowledge within internally, I think the beauty of what I'm seeing in this initiative is that probably some of what you're doing internally could translate outwardly. So the first thing for me is just being aware that a lot of people don't understand the role of council, the role of local government. And if you're already doing training internally, that could be something that you could leverage in the community as a whole, once you start kind of tying in the community satisfaction piece, which I think could be linked probably in ways you've already thought of, but it just really feels like there will be issues that you're going to see internally that are also going on externally, and you're already doing the work to be able to address them in creative ways.
Yeah, and I think Linda said it well, if you don't have that culture that's open to the change, open to innovation, you just will get pushed back as an organization and never actually succeed in your goals. It's always a fight internally, externally, amongst everybody. So I think that's, this was an attempt, I know my first, my first term on council, we talked about, we wanted to create a culture of sustainability within the organization, but we had no strategy on how to get to...
Oh, hi. I dog just ran in.
I was wondering what that was.
There's a rat.
I was like, what?
We just got off the airplane, so she, I didn't get home to drop her off, just her apologies. I'm distracted now. And, but we didn't, we never put those, those fundamental building blocks within the organization to create that culture of sustainability, and we never really got to that point, that sophistication level as an organization. Bye, Minnie. See you later. So I see him, thank you. So anyway, this, this, council is very determined, and the CIO, I think, is not a really good process to actually build those building blocks within the organization that we can then leverage in the future. Ted?
Yeah, so what about celebrating successes?
In fact, that's a, Mayor Heitzman, the, that's a big part, actually, of the process within the departments is looking at the successes and how, and some of those successes are being celebrated through the communications hub, the Kleinchamps, to some of the discussion, the Kleinchamps, I've seen this growth in terms of excitement from the staff about that they're driving this. It's not a top-down process. And when they've been talking about it, they're like, well, that looks good and everything that's kind of in the sale, but we think it should go this way. And so we've actually taken that and built it in so that they're actually driving it, and you can see it's starting to pick up momentum. And so in terms of successes, some of the recommendations that staff have had are specific programs on that hub where people are acknowledged, there is programs that are acknowledged, a lot of that different, like I'm not going to go through all the ideas, but the staff have a whole bunch of ideas about what they value in terms of acknowledgement for their work. And it's not about, we want more money. I mean, I'm sure they would love that, but it's not about that. You know, all the ideas are around acknowledging the extra steps that some of their colleagues take, telling the stories about successes that they've had, or the implementation where they run into a challenge and they innovatively addressed it, and then they implemented that program, and it's gone really successful. They want to have pictures, video, like all kinds of things. So that are some of the ways that staff, and there's a lot of ideas. I don't know if there's any things.
Yeah, and it's certainly in terms of the communication is an area that, you know, the stories are starting, the CIO updates are getting there, but it's, it's a good point that we're going to start leveraging that more.
Thank you. Yeah, back to this benchmarking, because to the mayor's comment, you know, ultimately the purpose of this organization is to serve the community. And so if we just sort of feel better internally, where is the actual community benefit? You can assume perhaps that if we're feeling better inside, that somehow it will affect outside. But will there be anything more concrete than that? For example, can we do the same work for less money, for example, or increase amount of work with the same resources, or we have faster turnaround times? Is there something we'll be able to communicate to the wider community as a result of this?
Mayor Heitzman, that is the objective. It sounds like Catherine asked.
Well, I wanted to add one story I heard to the celebration piece, and that was the way in which the departmental initiatives impact the community. For example, was it operations? Whoever did that snow clearing thing?
Operations.
Yeah, so operations came up with a Klein program that involved the launching of this sidewalk, so I know it doesn't sound very exciting, but the sidewalk snow clearing thing. And what they were looking at is analyzing how the rollout went and where it was really effective and where they ran into challenges in terms of snow clearing sidewalks and things like that. And they came up with a whole series of recommendations on how to improve the implementation of the next piece of device in a way that addressed some of the challenges that they faced, and that was particularly related to staffing and people that, who actually run the machine. I mean, I know it doesn't sound very exciting, but...
No, no, snow clearing is a highly exciting issue in the district.
Okay, so I didn't know, because I was looking around at the faces, and I was thinking, they don't look like they're very excited about this. But operations was super excited about how, because what they did was they rolled out this machine, and then they went, okay, we didn't anticipate this, this, and this, but we've got these other things happening, so now we're going to do that. Well, that's an external-facing thing. If you can clear more snow in less time, more effectively, then that's an outwardly-facing type of customer service initiative.
It's a great machine.
It's a great machine.
It's a what?
Great machine. It's a great machine.
It's a great machine.
That's just one.
When you're council candid, it's snow clearing is always an exciting budget.
Anything you want to add in sort of? I think, I think, I think the one thing that we're leading towards is the benchmarking piece and really starting to build those comprehensive things we'd want to benchmark internally, externally, all those things, so we can really show, have something measurable that we can dig our teeth into it. I know it's always the elusive piece, but I think you're right, we needed to create that cultural foundation in order for it to be driven by the staff. And that's really one success, so. Thanks. I look forward to seeing how this continues to evolve. I think these projects start off well, and keeping them sustained is the trick. So you actually get it over sort of the, get to the paradigm shift where it becomes just intuitive within the organization. Good job. Thank you. Anything else? None, we'll move on to the agenda. We're back in our committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, October night, and we're on item 33, subdivision and development control bylaw update. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll provide a quick sort of introduction for council. So the grading of the subdivision control bylaw has been sort of our effort over the last couple of years to introduce some more sustainable practices into the bylaw at council's direction. The last time it was actually updated was only 2014, so just before, in fact, council approved it not maybe 2015, but it really is one of those bylaws that's sort of always going to be a bit of a work in progress. It's always going to be subject to continuous review and review of process. So we've had a very much a team approach to this. Dave Marrow, Director of Major Projects, has been involved, Chris Wickham, the Engineering Director, Walfrid Sikkell, Municipal Engineer, Kerry Hamilton, one of our planners, Devin Kianagas, sort of got it, pulled it together at last minute, unfortunately, he's away sick today. He was going to do the presentation, so we cobbled this together at the last minute. So the bylaw itself regulates the minimum standards for municipal infrastructure. If you had to distill it down to one sentence, so water, sewer, storm, roads, lighting, and a few other elements, it's applied at the subdivisional building permit, building permit processes through those processes. As you can see, the bylaw itself is very brief, it's half a dozen pages. The changes we've made to that are basically administrative, we haven't, nothing substantive has changed in the bylaw itself. But then you've got a couple of hundred pages of sort of a dense assembly of sort of somewhat drying places, in my opinion, of technical specifications and schedules.
You have to work on your sales.
That's why we're here.
I mean, there's been a huge amount of work to get, that's where all the work has gone into, the schedules and the improvements that we've made to those which all my colleagues are going to go through. There's a couple of new schedules too that we'll touch on. One is surround dikes and erosion protection, and then site grading and retaining walls. So with that, I think Laura, are you?
Yeah.
So Laura's first up.
All right. So just in terms of general updates, I brought a sample of our master municipal construction documents, just so that, because if we talk about these sometimes, if you're not involved in construction, you have no idea what these is. So BC has, there's a provincial association that puts these master municipal construction documents together that contractors all over the province use, so it's a very consistent standard, which shows all kinds of standard drawings and standard practices used in construction, you know, nutshell. So we, their last update was in 2009. Our bylaw was brought in to update to be comparative and in harmony with the master municipal construction documents, as we like to call MMCD. And so what we've done is we've removed any duplication because we made these master, or these statements of like, oh, and we, you know, agree with what's in MMCD, but then we also then had the standard written, which ends up being confusing, so we've taken out those duplications. We've also improved the headings, now follow MMCD more closely, so it'll be easier for contractors to go, oh, yeah, I know that's section 2.5, or whatever it is. So hopefully that's just easier for everybody to use. So that update was well overdue. And then we've also updated right-of-way widths, so that was just another thing that's changed over time. And so for our utilities, so specifically when you have a water main or sanitary or storm, or probably just the, those, the ones that are utilities that are underground, having appropriate right-of-way widths so that if you actually have to go and repair it, you don't end up undermining somebody's building or something like that. So we're trying to prevent those types of things. And as we work on steeper slopes, this is becoming more important and trickier to accommodate. So we, I'm going to, I am an engineer, I will get a little detailed at times, so I'll try to, I'll try to back away from that. In terms of, to the water and sanitary sections, we updated our population densities, so that's like the expected number of people per unit, so that we get better accuracy in terms of how much water is being used per unit and how much sanitary sewage is being produced. We also made improvements to, I don't know how to fix this so I can actually read it.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure you can work on that one through this.
There you go. Okay.
Thank you. And then as well, improved some specifications for lift station design. So this'll, our emergency generators will be more, a more consistent brand, so that like we need spare parts for something, we're not having to find a whole bunch of different types of parts. And then as well, well, yeah, so anyway, it basically improves efficiency of maintenance operations, reduces downtime, reduces chances of spills, and saves money. And then general improvements to provide better design standard throughout the document. So stormwater management clarified, first of all, specified at the beginning of the stormwater section what wire-off controls are required, best management practices, so that's like environmental controls. They had previously been advisory, and now the wording has been strengthened to be when they're actually, that most, when these are actually required, not just please do this, but you shall do this. The intensity, duration, frequency curve, normally known as the IDF curve, has been looked at, reviewed by a consultant, and changed to account for increased storm intensities that we've been experiencing over the last few years due to climate change. And then also, we have clear specifications for when oil grid separators are required for improved environmental protection for waterways. Road section, and I realize this is small, it's really just showing you sort of a sample of a table that we've, we've updated and added to clarify our road section. So the main objective of the changes we made to roads is to slow down traffic, well, to improve safety and the user experience for pedestrians and cyclists. So making streets feel safer promotes active transportation, so that's the main overall all goal, and then those are some of the details that you'll see in the document. And this, again, is just another sample of where we've changed the, so in some cases, this is the example of a major collector street. We've further reduced the minimum travel widths for some of our roads. We've also increased or specified minimum widths for sidewalks, multi-use paths, and bike lanes. Also, we've updated design standards to improve pedestrian safety at intersections. So in this case here, the bike lane used to be 1.7, we've changed it to 1.8. Parking was 2.5, it's now 2.4, and the sidewalk was 1.5 as a minimum standard, which is pretty small by today's standards, so 1.8, we've taken it up a little bit.
But you haven't changed the traveling, car traveling?
Well, in this case, it was already 2.3, which is what we need to accommodate trucks and buses adequately on a, on a major collector, so that has not changed. The BC Transit standard limits us to how low we can go because the side you near start banging into each other, which is not...
Will you go into, that was a cross-section, we go into an overview?
Yeah, that's just giving you a sample. There's more details in that giant document. So in terms of the driveway section had a lot of updates, and the main, it mainly just lacked detail, and then it resulted, which resulted in difficulty in forcing a good consistent standard across town. New wording needs to clarify standards and improve safety for both active users and drivers. We added more detail for residential and ICI driveway standards, as well as more clarity for driveways to duplexes, triplexes, and accessory dwelling units. Also, more detail for street driveways, steep driveways, which will hopefully avoid some poor driveway designs that we've been seeing lately with some of the new developments.
In the driveway designs, do we put in regulations about how much of a front lawn can be paved over for parking?
Yes. That's the idea, to have a, have a maximum driveway width, and then if there's, if it's a situation like a duplex where you can have two driveways on your frontage, there's a minimum distance between those two driveways as well, so you get a break in that.
Is there a minimum amount of non-permeable surface you can have in your front yard?
We haven't addressed it in that way. Is permeable surface is covered under the zoning bylaw?
So we have something in the zoning bylaw regulation that speaks to the onsite, this is mostly the off-site connection.
Fair amount of the work that Kerry's been done is trying to harmonize, there are issues sometimes that are covered in both, so trying to harmonize this bylaw with the zoning bylaw to make sure that they're working together and not across purposes.
So we took out some things that were in this bylaw that spoke to onsite stuff, and in the new zoning bylaw updates that we're going to be doing in 2019, we'll be including some more things on the onsite stuff that were removed.
Yeah. And on to Gary to talk about it.
So one of the new schedules from you...
But, hold on, Gary.
Sorry, I was just looking for a break. So could you go back to the MMCD provision? So our bylaw is intended to harmonize with that and just not duplicate it. But if they were updated, for example, in 2020, would our bylaw automatically become updated, or would we have to go back, review the new changes, and then update our bylaw accordingly, and possibly adopt them or not, or make exceptions to it?
Through review, Mary, yeah. So the idea is that, yes, if there was an update to the MMCD, we would, that would update all the things in our bylaw that directly reference it. Having said that, we still have our own standards that we put in place that might be beyond MMCD, so those would remain that higher standard or that more stringent standard? Does that...
Yeah, it does. No, so it automatically updates, so we would actually have to review it, and we wanted to not adopt some part of that, we'd have to make an exception and remember. Thank you.
Yeah, so when you're mentioning the duplexes and the maximum driveway coverage, would it be based on per unit, or is it per parcel, per land parcel that goes in?
So, I mean, essentially what it does, if the previous bylaw or the existing bylaw just didn't address the number of driveways per lot, so it just sort of didn't have a lot of information, so then people would just come in for driveway permits, and we had to just, we didn't really have something to work from. So this has clarified where, not, not only how many driveways, but where they can be. Like, for example, we require driveways to be off of the road with the least amount of traffic, if it's a corner unit or if it has a laneway. And so now we've just given a lot more clarity around, like a duplex could have a driveway on the back and on the front, or it could have a driveway on the side and on the front. Triplex could have a driveway, two driveways on the back and one on the side, you know, like it's...
And it's not only residential, but commercial as well?
Yes.
It's, I was just going to clarify, it speaks to units now. So it uses the same terms as our zoning bylaw uses, so it also clarifies some things that we're...
Yes.
Gary?
So a new schedule, section eight of Schedule B. We've seen a number of particularly residential subdivisions, developments, sort of moving into steeper, more difficult topography, and I think we can safely say that some of the results have been not quite what we intended. So this, this new section that deals essentially with steep slopes, site grading, and retaining walls essentially is really to try and have developers work a little bit more with the landscape and to minimize the visual impact that they have, rather than sort of the engineering, the modifications as, as much as you can through, through an engineering practices, rather to sort of have them soften that and work with the landscape a little more. So there's three or four pages on that with respect to the next, particularly with respect to the next slide, with grading, site grading and retaining walls, setting maximums on that, rather than, we are seeing some six, seven, and eight meter retaining walls in places. We're not saying that that's no longer going to be possible, but what we are saying now is that we want those to be done in smaller increments, so setting a two-meter height max, and that if you've got a two... So setting a two meter height max and that if you've got a two meters, then you need a two meter horizontal surface and then you can go up two meters again. So creating that sort of softening the impact rather than having singular homogenous sort of structures, trying to create smaller structures that again easier to screen. And there are there are requirements around landscaping screening on those steps to soften the visual impact. And there's a particular provision around the, you can't use, you can't artificially create a building envelope out of thin air using retaining structures.
Excellent.
That is a summary of that particular, that particular section.
So moving on to street trees and boulevards, I thought it would be important to briefly highlight some of the benefits of street trees before diving into this section. So I know there's a lot of studies out there that speak to the benefits of street trees, but I thought I'd take one from our neighbors to the south. So the city of North Vancouver, as part of their street tree master plan, did an extensive research project with the Center for Urban Forest Research. And they found there were a number of benefits to street trees. Energy savings, greenhouse gas reductions, air quality improvements, stormwater management, property values and aesthetics having an impact on health and reduce crime rates. And so what they found out of all this is they actually weighted those benefits and put it to put a cost to that. And they found that the cost benefit ratio of of street tree benefits outweighed the cost of maintaining them. So operational costs to put them in and maintain street trees, it outweighed it five to one. So that was kind of an interesting study there that spoke to spoke to those benefits. And so what we thought is that we should probably, you know, we don't have the funds or the time right now to create a massive street tree management or master plan. However, we have our street trees really live or lived within this subsection of boulevards in our by law. So we thought we'd make its own street tree schedule. And so we have a schedule F now that just speaks solely to street trees. And we've updated a number of the requirements and regulations within that. So what we've done is we've updated the language to add to retaining, to retaining existing street trees where feasible and to support conifer trees and shrubs. So that's all season planting. And I think this this photo down here kind of shows the example of why that's important. So we see street trees downtown in the summertime. And with a lot of our infill developments downtown, we're seeing the loss of some of our conifer trees that are on some existing vacant lands. And what we're doing is we're seeing street trees coming in place of those. However, some of those street trees are deciduous trees. And so in the wintertime, it kind of looks like this. So what we're trying to see and in support in this in this by law is to see a little bit more all season planting supported not just in downtown, but all throughout Squamish. We've also included language in this regulation to speak to bear smart. And we've worked with our wildlife team to to incorporate that in there. And we've also required some requirement around invasive species management within our boulevard and our right of ways. So the by law was a very, has a very detailed downtown streetscape section. And this is bound in schedule H. So a lot of the language in this document refers to Cleveland Avenue and are written kind of more as guidelines. And so what we've looked to do in schedule F, which is, you know, sits in that by law as well, is the street tree section is to fortify that language and speak to it, speak to soil volumes, root barriers and street tree widths. And that's really to support healthy street tree growth and to ensure that we're reducing maintenance costs in the future by not having those roots go into sidewalks or go into bike lanes or. And that's not just for Cleveland Avenue anymore. The language is speaking to a broad range of downtown streets as well as other streets in Squamish. We've also, this was a, this little clip it up here is from the schedule H. And although we weren't able to change that one specifically, we did put language into schedule F and we added more street trees. We had some comments back from our advisory design panel saying, we don't have street trees for the street or for the street. What do we want to see? And so what we have done is put a street tree for every downtown street. And we've also put in some language for other streets and neighborhoods. So industrial areas, commercial areas, residential areas and recommended street trees for those neighborhoods.
I think one thing people often overlook with street trees is is stormwater management and absorption. If you're having a flooding problem in your backyard, plant a couple of trees and very likely it'll solve your problem.
Are we prescriptive about the types of trees?
So we are prescriptive on some of our downtown streets, but we are not prescriptive for some of the other neighborhoods. There is a consensus to move to a consistent street tree on some of our urban, urban streets to have that. That's that's a best practice. However, we've kind of left it open for other streets.
And the reason I ask that is because some are nicer than others. I grew up in a house that had a mountain mash in front of it. There's the city of Vancouver went to great lengths to pull all those out. And so I'm just wondering if we've sort of thought of some that we might want and some that we might not want.
Through you, Mary, yes, we have. And you can find the actual list. It's in F point two in here. And there's a list of all the different street trees.
Mountain mash is not in that.
And we did take into consideration some of the diseased trees that are, some of the trees that are more susceptible to disease. We do have language in there that speaks to some, you want diversity, so you don't want the same street tree on every single street either, because if that street tree were to get a disease, then you've lost all your trees downtown.
I believe our our wild safe bear aware policies speak to the mountain mash because it's a bear ground.
Correct.
Councilor Chappell and Councilor Parry.
Things similar to that. The downtown has a really shallow, like as far as root falls. And one of the concerns, a lot of people planted cedars. And storms come, they get knocked over because roots can only go very shallow because of the, because of the estuary and the water table. So are we considering roots that grow and insurance will done by others? I just had to bring that up because so many cedar trees have been planted downtown. They have a very shallow root base and they get knocked over and knock houses over in heavy storms.
So a lot of the of the regulation that we have in this will speak to what we'll be requiring to see when we're putting new street trees downtown. Currently, right now, it's happening with new developments. So it's happening at the development permit stage. We're seeing that in the landscape plan. So the professionals are looking at those requirements. But now we'll have something for them to look to and say, we want to ensure there's enough soil volume for those roots to properly grow and not having kind of these shallow areas where they won't be able to to grow and become sturdy, long, healthy trees, long living, healthy trees.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Parry.
Yeah, thanks. So what about fire and street trees? I mean, we've got a treaty by law coming up here next. I think we've done a lot of referencing our fire by law. We kind of, it's a question.
The number of trees that we're planting with separation isn't significant, particularly in a larger context. And some of them are deciduous. It's not like we're going to create a line into the community with these street trees. What's the separation, the horizontal separation between?
I think it's nine meters.
And the wildfire plans, really our vulnerability is the interface, the underlying areas.
True, that's correct.
Not the downtown.
Cedar hedges.
So no, this isn't regulating on a private property. Yeah, this is regulating the built environment.
So that was my point I was just going to raise is that this is just the the street frontage and a street tree. There are other regulations and other best practices that we use onsite, especially when we're considering park space as well. So this doesn't really account for that. It's just the frontage along the street.
Okay, let's, let's move on trees.
Yeah.
I just was wondering about the integration of future sidewalks since we don't have sidewalks and our landscapes in the downtown houses are built right up sidewalks and then the street. So where if this is supposed to address trees, where?
Well, we, so the idea is that the, now you're getting back to more of the, the cross sections that we're looking at. And the intention is to be making sure that even if something is at zero lot line, there's still boulevard space left that includes room for street trees in it. Yeah, I mean, that's the main thing. And then we're looking as well to, I mean, a little bit of it's definitely best practices in terms of like I'm encouraging developers, engineers to, when they, when there's room for still inadequate sidewalk, to actually have planting strips with trees in them. So you get the combination, not just the grates and the trees, which is very urban, which is appropriate for some places, but it's nice to have actually some greenery in there. So so that's more covered in the in the cross section. And when we absolutely are requiring, requiring.
Part of last year in the zoning by law did the downtown setback. Some of the buildings were pushed back for exactly this reason.
There's one last slide. So this is on roadway lighting. So we've received some complaints of lighting color under current, under our current by law and that the color was being too white or blue. It was harsh to look at, had glare and offered later, was adding to light pollution. So there's more evidence now that yellower lights are better for insects and migration patterns of animals as well as human health due to a less disturbance of circadian rhythm. So we can, what we've done within this by law has changed it to, we had originally 4,000 K and now we've changed it back to, or we've changed it to 3,000 K to offer that kind of warmer light. And next in, as Gary mentioned, this is an ongoing change to this by law. And one of the things that we are working on right now currently at the district is trying to have consistency with our light design and our light locations right now, especially in the downtown and in our growing developments such as waterfront landing and oceanfront. We want to try to find some consistency to bring down maintenance values or maintenance costs as well as kind of a consistent look for different neighborhoods and areas. So currently working on that, it's going to come in the next, in the next iteration of this.
I know with the fluorescent lights, you couldn't actually, they weren't measured in Kelvin, so, but LED lights you can measure in Kelvin. That's what the K is. Celsius. And that's your last slide?
That is, sorry, we don't have a thank you question slide.
Questions, Councilor Lee.
Okay, for our trees on the frontage, do we have a target number per block? Because there are studies now coming out and the work in Northland shows the more you have, the healthier people are.
So what we've done, it's a great question through you, Mary. So what we have is the schedule H already has a lot of regulation or guidelines around best practices of how far away a tree should be spaced. But what that schedule H used to talk to you just says, this is for Cleveland Avenue. What we've done in this by law has said, refer to this as for all other downtown streets. So we haven't had the capacity to do a massive streetscape for, design for every single street. But what we've done is referred back to what we already have and made sure that it's a little bit more comprehensive to more than just Cleveland Avenue. So yes, we do have something that speaks to distances and how many we should have.
How many per block?
It's not really a per block, but I believe it's every nine meters.
Yeah, it is in the.
It's in, I can.
That's in schedule H.
Yeah.
I was just trying to get a sense because the more we have, the more shade we have, the more time change sticks in, becomes more important for us to have a shade in streetscape rather than an ideal.
It would be 15 per block.
Through you, Mary. It just, it does depend on the length of the block. And then in residential areas, which we're very interested in seeing this as well, this kind of treatment along like the government road corridor and other areas. Quite often, because I ended up doing a lot of the reviews for the developments that come in, it ends up being, you know, roughly about this much spacing to a driveway and then this much spacing. And so you, you know, they figure out how many trees fit into that area and then with the growth of their capes, like we, unless we are architects, are typically putting these together and and they don't get past me unless it looks right. So that's how we do it now.
Maybe the other piece to add is we've also put language in here that when there is space inadequate, we have larger corner bald belts or a little bit more space on that streetscape that we support a number of of street trees at once. So so kind of if we're wanting to support more conifers, sometimes you can have, depending on the tree species, you can have them clustered. And so we did put language around having more clustered tree spaces as well.
Okay, I have a few questions.
Go for it.
I noticed in the drawings that we don't have any roadway drawings for the bike lanes we're piloting with them on the inside of the park car. And I also noticed we didn't have any drawings for separated bike lanes. And I'm wondering if you could add that back.
Absolutely. So we are currently working on, let's see if I can get all this list right. So we're working on a, I guess, what is it, a concept level design for the government road corridor separated bike lanes. The reason why, there's probably two reasons why we haven't included anything in this particular update. One, it was simply time and money. We just only had a limited scope that we could manage and get this to you guys in a timely way. And then the second thing was that we do have a series of, a few different things coming down. And then we also have, in the next few months, we're going to get standards for the downtown streets. So for Third Avenue, for Pemberton, for what those concept bike lane design is going to look like. So what'll end up happening is we'll have this list of standard drawings and then we'll have a second list of more specific drawings that are actually for certain streets. So but they're all in progress right now and there was no point doubling up on the work. It's coming.
I was just going to add just a little bit that that we did update this table to speak to what those which should look like. And that's hopefully to help the design of those bike lanes.
Okay, with regard to the steep slopes, Gary, I don't know if it's appropriate to include it here, but in terms of the overlook issue that we've heard from the community and also the location and sighting of infrastructure, I don't know whether that's more of a zoning by law or whether that's a subdivision control by law. But we saw this with the polygon proposal and towards overlook and also the sighting of their pump house.
Yes, and I, the latter issue with respect to building, I'm 99% sure that we included something with respect to building, infrastructure building locations.
I didn't see it, but I might have.
So that was sort of to address that issue. Let me see if I can.
Yeah, both of those are in that area. And I didn't know whether the overlook thing was more of a zoning by law or whether that was a subdivision control by law.
I would think the subdivision development by law, this is what the improving officer would look at. So I think it's important.
It's off site infrastructure. So to me, it seems appropriate for the subdivision development.
But also from neighbors looking down on neighbors in steep slopes, that's a complaint that we're wanting to avoid in the future is that there's some sort of larger setback bummer. So where fences go and trees go so that neighbors aren't looking down on neighbors.
So at the time of subdivision, they would be using this regulation and the new, this new regulation is supposed to help address the neighbor neighbor and actually provide what those slopes should be, where in some areas we didn't have that regulation before. And so it should be addressed right at subdivision. And then later, when it's a neighbor neighbor built issue, that's kind of more, it can be more of a zoning by law. We do have some regulation of retaining walls in there, but it would have, we'd have to now marry it to this, this higher level of regulation.
It is actually, it's the very bottom of page A D A, the last, site grading, site grading and design shall ensure that municipal infrastructure buildings are appropriately and accessibly located, not visually obtrusive or create a significant visual impact on adjacent properties. Exterior infrastructure building material should complement those adjacent structures. So that's the attempt to sort of, it's very difficult, of course, it's very much a site specific context.
Can't anticipate everything.
Yeah, so that was the attempt to address that issue.
But that overlook thing is just makes you sure people can walk right to the end of their property line and look up.
That's particularly with respect to municipal infrastructure buildings. The the overlook's addressed by the fact that that retain walls now need to be set back from the property line and stepped.
And my last one is just on the downtown streetscape. The drawings and pictures really don't reflect our weather. So we don't have any covered bench seating. We don't have any covered bike parking. And as we get more, with climate change, more intense summers and more intense rain events, I think we do need to create sort of a refuge mentality that people will want shade, they will want to sit outside. And already many elders in our community, you do see them congregate and they are sitting on park benches. But we also don't provide them trees around them or shade. So I think.
So I think we just need to be mindful of looking at those drawings and recognizing that many months of the year it rains, but that doesn't mean people don't want to be outside.
Through you, Mayor, I would just add that we didn't, through this process, weren't able to really review and go through that Schedule H, but that is definitely something that we would like to be updating.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, and I'm sure that the fire department views all this stuff, right? I mean, I am a little concerned about too many trees. I mean, I think the fire department's concerned about too many trees. What else?
Remind me that wildfire interface plan speaks to more deciduous trees and interface with fewer coniferous trees, because they burn slower and you don't catch fires. Is that, did I remember that correctly?
Fortunately, I'm not familiar with that.
That's a reasonable...
Yeah. And, and we're talking about mostly planting deciduous trees and the air range trees, correct?
Typically. I mean, what we're saying is that we would like to also see some conifers, just because they provide the greenery in the wintertime, obviously. Um, but in general, we're mostly talking about deciduous, and the spacing is quite large, and you, you'd have to have like quite a significant wind, you know, to get, to get it going canopy to canopy.
We got that.
We do. It, it's still, it's, it is definitely the interfaces that we're more concerned with, where we have entire forests next to housing and that sort of thing, where that comes in.
Can you back, go back to the list of the sidewalks? So have we, are we still doing, uh, regular sidewalks, and, you know, one thing I noted when we were at UDC in Westboro is the, is that they are paved sidewalks, not, uh, the standard white expensive sidewalks, that they just do paved pathways all the way through the community that are mixed-use and wide enough for bikes and pedestrians.
So we are actually, it's coming. We have our first one coming, um, maybe even this fall, I mean, we're getting to the end of pavings even, um, in the business park, because we're recognizing that the business park, although pedestrian, um, the amount of pedestrian traffic is, is definitely increasing, and the amount of funding we have to do wholesale improvements is not there. So we're actually experimenting with having more traditional sidewalk on one side of the road, and having multi-use pathway on the other side of the road. So that's typically like a three-meter path that would be able to be used by all sorts. And we're looking at other examples around town of where we may be able to do this. So that's all part of our, like, as we look at the act of transportation plan, and as we look at what, what's a reasonable way to actually implement this wonderful act of transportation plan, because it's super challenging, obviously, to go from where we are to where we want to be. Um, yeah, we are looking for those opportunities, and we're, we're open to that for sure.
So I also, uh, vouch using laneways and restricting, having our, um, roads be for traffic and parking where, you know, and then our laneways remain permeable surface and designated for walking, pedestrian use, and where you have slower traffic and much less traffic compared to the other, um, downtowns and different places, and with that sort of strategy, we looked at moving our, you know, instead of having pedestrian traffic on every single street, which is incredibly expensive, actually designating alleyways for pedestrian traffic.
Well, I mean... I was gonna say, and, and did the bylaws speak to, uh, the vernacular of those laneways? The design of those laneways?
We didn't, um, we didn't get very far with laneways on this one. However, in practice, we've been implementing ways to make laneways a little more like advisory lanes, or, I mean, with the idea being that we've reduced it to effectively one travel lane, and then having pedestrian, uh, areas on either side. This is, I mean, we do want to keep our laneways available for parking, because that's where we want our parking ramps to have come off of downtown.
For...
No, not, not for parking on-street parking, for access to laws, because we want to have continuous sidewalks on our, on our front streets that, and then have nice commercial frontages and all that sort of thing. So we are still wanting the majority of the traffic to ultimately access their property from the laneway, but yes, we do want to create opportunities for pedestrians to use those areas too. It's a, it's a, it's a tricky balance though, because we still have to have loading areas for trucks and for these commercial properties, and there's a whole lot of things that go into that. But the, but the main point is that all you're seeing here is this, this minimum right-of-way width, which is 6.5 meters, when we can get it. Sometimes we don't even have that much space, because our laneways aren't totally consistent, um, but we are trying to put pedestrian pathways on them when we can.
Thank you for any attention. I appreciate it.
So I know this was sort of a, um, a bit of a quick greening, cleaning up of the bylaw, I thought, I think you did a good job of doing that. And you spoke, and it, and it's good to see, um, adaptation, planned adaptation things being implemented in the bylaw, which is really encouraging. And you've spoken to a few of the things that are on deck, some mo, some specific road design things. Is there, is there a piece of the, sort of the greening of this that, that would be a next step in this bylaw? That isn't quite included yet, but you think is worthy of looking into next year?
Not obviously.
You obviously thought you did a pretty good job. I just thought, is there, like, there's a whole bunch of things that are on deck that you're still working on. As you said, it doesn't, it's not a wholesale rewrite of this bylaw, it's greening of stormwater and trees and, and some visual stuff, some adaptation stuff, so I'm just wondering if there's a...
If I'm being, Mayor, I think, um, a lot of other municipalities go into more depth and have actual policies or other separate plans that are just on street trees, or just on street scape, or just on, um, stormwater management, and we took a lot, we, you know, did some research on all of those different plans and tried to put it all into one, and I think maybe, and, you know, as we grow, uh, as a municipality, we could see some more of those plans and getting more detailed that way. Um, that would be somewhere where I see grow, and I believe Chris wants to add.
I know, we've looked, we've looked at natural assets and how we start quantifying those and bringing them into these types of bylaws.
I, I think, um, an important aspect of this is that, I, I think we've done a decent job of greening it, and, and we have done those, as we reference out to other, other plan programs. So it's like in, in the stormwater management plan, um, we sort of left the placeholders to plug in the catchment-specific integrated stormwater management plans by saying, if there's an integrated stormwater man, stormwater management plan, follow that. Otherwise, this is what you need to do. So I think a lot of that other work that you're referring to, including the green infrastructure and everything, really comes from the other plans, just like we've tried to talk about the standards for the act of transportation. Uh, but we didn't say, and on this block of government, this is what it's gonna look like, and we're doing a, a separate plan for that, and a separate plan for the downtown act of transportation networks.
So this, this is, uh, ready to come to council, it seems like. I didn't see any, any glaring comments from council, so, um, there's a recommended motion that...
Can I ask one last question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just because we just looked at our wildfire protection plan, um, and we are looking at steep slopes, um, and that's the future, are we also thinking about water reserves underground for firefighters, especially in the interface areas? And I don't know whether I'm making that up, but I heard that Kelowna was considering putting underground, um, water catchment areas in some of their higher neighborhoods, so that firefighters had access to a lot of water very quickly that wasn't just coming from the Highlands.
And the consultant who was here two weeks ago, or whoever that was, did speak to that.
So maybe as a, it's a way to catch rainwater, keep it for interface firefighting, possibly.
It's an interesting question.
I'll just put that on the...
I, I, from a practical standpoint, we do have large reservoirs up high throughout our interface in the Highlands, for example, that are feeding, uh, fire flows for buildings, and the same would be, uh, available for interface fire. Um, I don't know if we've actually looked at, though, um, how the two plans really interact, and whether, I'm making the assumption that that's probably a good thing, probably sufficient, um, but we may be able to do a better job of, of connections to those, for example, in, in specific areas. That's, that's a great suggestion to take away.
Well, I'm just thinking, I wish we could have a water tender, but then there's one, and the fire might be in many, many places, or we could have these underground water reserves that could be used in the case of an interface fire. So I'll just put that as a notion.
Maybe just, yeah, we'll leave it there, I don't think it's in this particular bylaw, but it's something to, as we, as we work through the wildfire plan, and things come up, that dovetail and double plan. Thanks, guys. Um, so there's a recommended motion that we received, the update, and that staff bring forward, uh, three readings next week of the Spanish subdivision and development control bylaw, number 2639, blah, 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 blah. I'll move that second by Doug.
Not the blah, blah, blah part.
That's B.L.A.E. All those in favor? Opposed, any, which in carries? Thanks, guys, good work. Um, strategic plan update, Ms. Blande.
I see.
Oh, God, I was saying goodbye. Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Heisman. Um, council, well, and public, received, um, the comprehensive matrix, which essentially are tracking matrix for all of the action items that are, um, contained within the strategic plan. So this is ultimately our final update for council for this term. Your strategic plan spanned the entire term. The completed items are based on essentially the end of September 30th. We still have a few busy meetings ahead of us, so those that are in progress, some are really close to completion. Uh, but just as a reminder for those watching, that this council had four priority areas. In terms of the action items to address those priority areas, um, completed, we have 75%. Now, there were an, a number of action items that were put on deck as soon as it was recognized that there were capacity challenges or control challenges in terms of our ability to lead a project. Interestingly, two of those that have to do with transit, one of them being regional transit, had come out of the on-deck and into the in-progress, which is exciting. But if you take out the on-decks, which staff were not working on, then we completed 81% of the action items. It's important to note as well that these action items aren't weighted, so when you're counting percentages, the OCP got the same weighting, because we're discounting, as those that are smaller in scope. Just briefly, in progress, the technology transformation program, as council is aware, is a multi-year program, uh, that will go into subsequent years following this term. Benchmarking, you just got an update on climb, and that's an ongoing process, and eventually won't be an action item necessarily, but an ongoing system, but that's the goal of climb. Brennan Park Recreation Center, the improving, expanding funding of it is something that, again, will span beyond this, this term, but staff are making headway. We recently got an update on the engagement side of things. Um, agriculture and food security, Area D, this is well on its way, um, but it's not led by the district, so the work continues and we continue to support it. Sponsorship policy is nearing the finish line, I believe it's coming to this council before the end of the term. Regional transit, as I mentioned, was on deck, it's been put forward into the action items, um, I'm working, and as council is aware, council's been in the loop, that CAOs from municipalities, as well as administrators from the First Nations and the Corps, have been working on the regional transit system, and we're just doing the behind-the-scenes work right now on funding and governance to continue to work with the province and hopefully create a system. Uh, the community amenity contribution policy, uh, looking at my colleague Gary Buckston there, that that's near the finish line too, and we're coming to council before the end of the term, ideally for endorsement, similar with the final two bylaw projects. Highlighting the key strategies and master plans, uh, this council has done a fabulous job of prioritizing master plans and strategies to drive the work and drive up an annual plan. Uh, there are 12, these are the first six on the list that we completed this term. Uh, I'm going to now get into the four priority areas.
And the asset management plan is underway as well.
The asset management plan update is underway.
That's right.
Yeah. So I'm gonna just highlight some larger action items and high-level achievements in which the area is recognizing. I can go through the single one. I don't know if there's questions now, Mayor Heisman, or if...
We can, okay. And maybe unless it's a clarification on a specific slide, we'll hold general questions.
Well, just on the CAC, can you just back up one page, please? In progress, so that's not, that'll be the next bunch, right?
No, it's supposed to come back to council for consideration.
Twenty-seven. No, sixteen, sorry.
Sixteen.
Next week.
This slide is taken out of the strategic plan, this is the priority area of some overarching, uh, revision statements or objectives from council. And at a high level, um, these are some of our more key, I think I'm ranking, projects, but some of the achievements that staff and conjunction of council have achieved. Healthy communities, similarly, this is out of the council strategic plan, and some more visionary focus for council, and then the high-level achievements, the OCP, of course, being one of them. Affordable housing task force actions, and we continue to work on our housing initiatives. Act of transportation, emergency management and planning is something that continues, um, it's a comprehensive plan, but we need some great help there. Economic development, out of the strategic plan. Um, the other priority areas, a lot of the portfolios have been in council quite a bit in terms of reports. Economic development hasn't, so at the conclusion of my presentation, our economic development officers want to come forward and give a brief update on economic development. In the interim, some of the key projects that occurred before and after Kate Mulligan The oceanfront sale seems like a long time ago. It wasn't. Uh, again, environment, out of the strategic plan, and then some of our key accomplishments with council in that area. We've just recently been designated a carbon neutral organization for municipalities. I can retire now. Yes, you're good. And to end on a high note, before Kate does come and speak, um, a list of awards, sorry for the smallness, but there's so many to fit onto one. And these aren't all of the awards the district was received, but these are the awards that have driven through employees, so and council, through the internal, as opposed to magazine articles, or best places to vacation. These are the awards that the, the work of the district created or were recognized for. Before I pass it over to Kate.
Counselor Spahn.
Thanks, actually, it's for Kate in specific.
Well, let's, let's, any other questions for, uh, CAO? Just, just to reiterate, this was, um, our strategic plan, this, there's a work plan that underlies this, that has a whole body of things as well. This is just a higher level, uh, strategic prioritization that council has gone through the last four years.
Yes.
Well, Kate's gonna come later, if you want to ask her.
No, it's about, so these are great, I'm looking at all the economy things, and they're great plans, and we, uh, actually implementation of things, and the business retention expansion plan isn't mentioned in any of this, I wonder why that...
Well, why don't we wait for Kate to do her update, and then she's doing it.
Yeah, there, Mayor Heisman, in terms of that, it is a preconformant of the economic development strategy, it just wasn't captured in this higher level, the, of the overall strategic plan.
Yep.
Just a quick question on, um, our voter turnout. Just a quick question on our voter turnout efforts from Legislative Services and especially around what we did for youth, because we had questions here that sort of gave us some ideas, and I'm wondering which part of those we adopted and which ones are where we're at.
Mayor Heisman, Robin Arthur is General Manager, Corporate Services. So we undertook quite a push this year with you. We've been over to the high school a couple of times. We went down last month, we went down the end of June and also, I think, last month to preregister anyone who may be 18 by the time of voting. The other thing that we did is we worked closely with Quest. So we did the February project where we came up with some ideas and some strategies around increasing youth interest more than just the voter turnout. And then the other thing, we're working with Quest right now with their, one of their different class, KIA's class. And we have four of their students who are assisting with the election. So they'll be at all the different events voting, and then they're going to be working the election so that they can learn what our program is and then make some other suggestions, some further suggestions. So some of the other kids in that class are working on actual campaigns and going about at different angles, but we have secured four students. What we haven't done, what we just didn't have capacity for, is we wanted to get into John Ross and actually talk to some younger people about what local government is and what the voting process is, and we just didn't have the time. But that isn't something that's off of our radar. It is part of what we want to do. We just have to start a little bit earlier, I think, next time.
Yeah, I was curious, because a lot of the schools held mock elections last year and not seeing the same. So I wonder if there's a role for us to play in supporting those efforts in future elections, because it was a really fun part of the last campaign to be in the schools and talking to the kids. The only other one is the redesign of development notices and sign documents. And I'm wondering, maybe we bring a sample notice to the next, well, future CDC meeting? Because I think they're still not written in plain English. People still don't really know what that notice means, and I think we could make it more transparent.
Just driving by one in Vancouver, and there's a big picture of what development could look like, and if there's a much more visual way we can communicate and still get the legislative requirement.
And the hand delivery of notice is still written, yeah, quite complicated. Thanks, guys. This is great.
Any other questions before we ask Kate to join us? Let's see.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Kate Mulligan. I'm the Economic Development Officer for the District of Swamish. Thank you, Linda. I wanted to provide just a brief update in terms of some of the priority areas that we've been working on that were part of our economic development plan 2017, 2019. And just to remind you, within the plan, there was three pillars: people, business, place. And so people were about more people, trained and locally employed. Business was all about sustainable business, sustainable and diverse business growth. And then place was really about business infrastructure. So the idea that business infrastructure meets the needs of employees and employers. And through those three pillars, there's a series of priority areas and priority initiatives that District Economic Development has worked on, not in isolation, in partnership with the community. One of the big-ticket items was to establish the Swamish Economic Steering Group. And the SESG, as it's known, has five working groups, as well, the working groups support all of these initiatives. So I'm just going to go over a couple of broad-stroke-T highlights in terms of some of the accomplishments the working group, the SESG, and economic development has accomplished since 2017. So this is, this Swamish Economic Steering Group composition. It's an 11-member, sorry, it's 11 members, various organizations, both locally and also we have provincial representation. And the goal of the Economic Steering Group is to provide strategic direction as well as support some of the project areas that we're working on. We're collaborating on projects that some of the partners are working on, as well as they are collaborating with us on some of the projects that fit within the Swamish economic The actual working groups, we have five working groups, all of them fit underneath each of those three pillars, and the initiatives support what was laid out in terms of strategic priorities between 2017 and 2019. And the composition of this group is made up of private sector, sector associations such as the PC Forestry Association, the Chamber, other ecdev organizations such as How Some Community Futures, government, and we have various levels of government that are participating, such as Work BC as an example, and also academia. So we have Quest and SFU, and all of them are participating, contributing to these initiatives. And it's been really successful so far. So a couple of highlights. First of all, this is the Swamish Hiring and Retention Guide. It was published last week, and this was done in partnership as part of the workforce group. We worked with Tourism Swamish, the Chamber, and Work BC, and the BIA. And the Swamish Hiring and Retention Guide basically provides an analysis on the local workforce. So in terms of what's the composition of our local workforce, what's their education background, what occupations are they working in, where they're working, as well as practical tips for employers. And a couple of features of this guide is that we try to make it as interactive as possible. So we do have some interactive graphs. It's actually active on our website. You can download a copy as well. But we also have custom data that's available. So businesses, in particular industries, can actually make requests to economic development, and we can run a custom data series in terms of information on hiring and retention. Another example would be the service excellence training. So this is actually a partnership as part of the BC Rule Dividend. It's with Tourism Swamish, as well as the Swamish Chamber and ourselves. What it is, is a series of training sessions that are meant for the purposes of attraction and retention and business expansion. It provides frontline to executive training, and it's also, it's also being, it's building blocks. So as we actually develop the program, Chamber, which is leading the initiative, is actually looking at how the program is performing, the various modules are performing, and doing adaptations based on the feedback that we're receiving. So what's great is it's nimble and it's being responsive to the needs of our employers. So I think so far, there's been about 60 attendees to date, and I know there's another session coming up soon. The next series that we launched was Sales of Service, Services of Sales. Active advising services, we are managing lots of different types of leads, not just investors, but a lot of existing businesses locally are reaching out to get help in various areas, whether it's access to funding, whether it's data and business intelligence, or also just process in terms of how do I apply for a business license? What does it take to get a development permit? We're working with all of these local businesses, as well as potential investors and people that are interested in starting their businesses, to take them through a handheld journey in terms of understanding from the start to the end what the process is and making sure that we're not dropping our hand along the way. The website is helping greatly with that. We do have a little highlight here. We had 40 tour participants over the past two weeks, and that's a partnership that we're doing with the Council of Forest Industries. It was very exciting. We had 24 Chinese investors in one day that we toured through Swamish, and they were so excited that they returned the second day, back to Swamish after visiting Whistler and Pemberton. So we were quite pleased with that, and we've received some excellent feedback from partners and business regarding the fam. We plan to do more of this in 2019. Our new event series, so this is an event series that's driven by economic development. We hosted a funding event earlier in the year. We provided export advising sessions. They were one-on-one sessions for local business. The funding event was focused on different funding mechanisms, whether you're starting or trying to grow or accelerate your business locally. We have a Start Smart Business webinar that we have been providing to local businesses through a 30% discount, and we actually hosted a webinar so we could provide greater access to local businesses just recently. And that provides all the considerations when starting a business. And in November, we're going to be launching another event. It's called Connect Your Hiring, and that one's going to be focused on workforce attraction and retention in line with our workforce report. I wanted to touch also on Smart Swamish, that was several months of work, and even though we weren't successful as a community, as a finalist for smart cities, a lot was accomplished. And I just want to remind council that the actual application was really well-received, and from the DG for the Smart Cities Challenge, it was quoted, "Swamish's proposal was one of the great proposals that simply didn't make the cut." So I just want to remind you that it was a really fantastic proposal. There was a lot of partnership involvement and also staff-level involvement in terms of making it a winning proposal, even though ultimately we didn't become a finalist. We also have a few other strategic partnerships. Moving Innovations is still in progress, and as council knows, there's several UBC clean energy applications in progress that we've worked to support. We're almost done here. We have a lot of new collateral. We have an investor piece. We have Y-Swamish, which is a flat sheet. We have sector profiles that we continue to build on. We have the recent Swamish Hiring and Retention Guide that I encourage you to check out, as well as we have a new guide that we'll be launching this in concert with Small Business Week, which is the week of the 15th. And this is going to be the Swamish Business Guide, which is focused on retention and expansion, and it'll be all about starting or growing your business with a whole bunch of practical information and tips. So that said, near completion. And then our website, we launched a new website in April to great success. We received a Marketing Innovation Award from the BCEDA, which was really great. We've had thousands of hits on the website. We have 118 resources that are available for our local business community. We have all new photography and video that supports the website as well as supports our partners. We share that in partnership with them, and we've had really positive feedback so far, and we'll continue to work to build out the site. And also, our Connect Place Plan Working Group, in progress, is working on several different initiatives focusing on supporting workforce housing. Consultation is underway with regards to the short-term rentals project, and we have an RFP in progress for employment land and space. We'll be doing an inventory and creating a model so that we have a forecasting model for supply and demand. And then finally, we also completed weight binding phase two. We installed new vehicular designs, new vehicular contrast signs. You'll notice many of those are replaced. New signs to celebrate iconic destinations and highlight more downtown experiences. We'll continue to build out the program, and the strategy is now complete. It'll be more about the process and the actual installation. And on deck, this is the last slide, we've got quite a bit going on for 2019. We plan to complete some of our, well, we are planning to complete our sector and FDI plan. We'll have the first stage of that. It'll be a target industry analysis completed in November. We plan to focus more on targeted trade shows, fams, and missions this year, now that we are equipped with foundational information that we can use to actually go after these industries. As I said, the employment land space inventory and model. Our local open data dashboard, that is actually in progress. That's part of the BC Rule Dividend. That will have to be wrapped by May as per funding, and we're well on our way with a dashboard of indicators already in hand, and we're in the primary and secondary collection phase now. We're going to continue our workforce report series. We're going to hopefully support with workforce housing recommendations that support the housing assessment. And we will actually be launching next week for Small Business Week, a Swamish Business Hub pilot in our lobby, which will feature a whole bunch of collateral as well as an iPad, so that local businesses, when they stop in, or potential investors, will have lots of information at hand regarding our local economy and how to start, grow, or invest in Swamish. And then, of course, continue with more training seminars and advising. And I'd be risked to say, if it wasn't all because of our partners, because it truly is, they're very collaborative, and we've had excellent relationships with those partners. So we really do appreciate all the hard work they provide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Schaffler.
Thanks, that was a really comprehensive presentation on the strategies that we completed, Kate, with the small department, I believe. It's a lot of work put in. My question was basically about the economy pillar and all, you know, what's up there is so much reflected in our action items in the report. And I'm just looking at these action items and wondering how they were implemented, so that, that was a great presentation. But, you know, I still, our business retention expansion plan a while ago, we've done a lot with partnerships. We still can't do our business licenses online. We still have a lot of work to do with zoning and having places for people to work is the biggest thing that we've actually, it's been a detriment this last four years, because we now have very few places for people to work, and especially in professional office space. How would you say that our plans align with our strategic development of actually, you know, inviting businesses in is great, but if they have no place to work, it falls down there?
Yeah, absolutely, through you, the mayor. So a couple of the key initiatives that we're working on, the employment land and space inventory, would be one of the key ways to increase the amount of space that's available for local companies. We need the data so that we understand sort of what's happening in the marketplace, not only just the data from the perspective of what we have existing, but we need to actually incorporate what are the economic conditions? We need to, we need to be able to do scenario building so that we can actually do forecasting, understand what our forecasted supply is, as well as what is the demand for the market. That's going to help us work with developers. That's going to help us tell the story to developers about why to develop, what to develop, where to develop. And in concert with that, and I just wanted to mention that that actual project is in collaboration with planning, so both planning and economic development are working in concert together. That's going to lead to, you know, any zoning considerations. That's going to lead to the guiding principles around increasing the supply based on the demand. So that's where we're going. We're not quite there yet. And with respect to business licensing, we are working with planning in terms of making business licensing work for us, essentially. You're right, the process is something that I think is a consideration in terms of making it easy for businesses to do business and obtain a business license. But business licensing, to me, is a much greater tool than just providing ease of access to business licensing. It's actually an opportunity to gather data, and meaningful data. So that's where we're working, that's what we're working towards. Part of our local open data project, we'll address that specifically. We're looking at our secondary collection methods, and part of that recommendation is through the business license process.
Thank you. I just follow up a second. So one of the things I noticed when coming through our data online is that our business licenses don't align with the actual business focus. So our, the business district is all in arts and entertainment. So our climbing gym is in arts and entertainment, our fitness facilities are arts and entertainment, our clinics are in arts and entertainment. So a lot of the things, it's really difficult to comb out the data from our business licenses, which means that it doesn't align with our other strategies. So I told, that, yeah, your work is excellent. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the focus on being able to collect exactly what is going on and turn that into initiatives that help our small businesses survive, and really that focus on local economic development is excellent. I really look forward to those strategies coming to fruition still, because I feel like the more we use up our land for residences, the more we're giving up the possibility to implement any... to implement any economic knowledge strategy. So there's no question, I'm just appreciative.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you could just follow up on a couple items. I know that business licensing revamp will come along with the technological transformations project. Where in the Q is that piece of the TTP? It's not yet.
Yeah, Tempest Module, I'll send it to the chair, is Q1 of next year.
And we are consulting.
We don't know when in Q1 yet, but in Q1.
But that is coming. And I know we've all, I know we all knew this TTP would take four years, and it's a complete reconstruction of all our digital interface internal systems, everything. So I think we're all putting for that. And just back to, you talked about your integration with planning. And I know when we first created this new department a couple of years ago, we really wanted to make sure that economic development voice was at the planning table. How, how is that going? How is that integration? Are you sitting in on development pre-app meetings? Is that happening?
So we are collaborating with planning quite a bit on particular projects. So for instance, short-term rentals, employment space. We get lots of questions from planning, and we ask lots of questions to planning. We consult on zoning, so there's a lot of integration there. Capacity-wise, sometimes it's a challenge to make every planning meeting and sit in. We do attend pre-apps when we think that we can actually provide value. There could be more integration, but from a capacity standpoint, I would say that that does pose a challenge. We're two people in the department with several initiatives, many of them foundational research-driven, as well as supporting the business community. So, yeah, I would say, yes, we are working really hard to collaborate, and I think we have a great relationship between the two departments. But it could always be better if we had additional capacity.
Thank you. Could you go back a couple of slides? There was an RFP. So employment land and space, because we just had an employment land strategy. This is a refinement of that I take, I forgot what this is about. And so, is this current space or future needed space? And if so, what type of space? Could you just elaborate on that?
Absolutely. So this is building off the 2015 study that was done, and you're right, it was focused on employment land. What we wanted to do between planning and economic development was create much more of an evergreen model. So what we're going to go out and do is inventory our land, but also our space, as opposed to just the land, so the built environment. And with that, there's going to be a number of attributes or variables that we'll be including in that analysis that go far beyond what the actual, the 2015 study did. From there, we're going to be building, and that will be all put into GIS, so it'll be visualized. And the data will be in open data sets, which is fantastic. So then we can do analysis and create apps and so on. But the second piece of that is the model. And the model is all about looking at what is the future supply or potential, and what is the future demand potential, so that we make sure that we're meeting those two. And again, there'll be lots of considerations built into that model so that we can do scenarios. Is it going to be perfect? No, there's always constraints when it comes to modeling, we understand that. But I think it'll provide a better indication. So when we do look at things like downtown zoning changes, or build out of neighborhoods and areas, we're able to look at it spatially. We're able to look at it from an evidence-based approach. And we're able to speak to the business community as well as potential investors when it comes to big parcels of lands and decisions. So that's sort of the goal of it.
And do you have a rough idea of the timeline of that?
So it's in RFP. We'll see how it goes. The budget's not huge, so we're kind of looking for somebody to bite on the project. It'll be bleeding into 2019 for sure. We were hoping to try to complete it, but with me being off for three months, some of the projects had to be delayed.
Two quick questions. Is there any value or opportunity in sort of a comprehensive census of our community in terms of skills and where they work, you know, what sectors do they work in the city, particularly that commuter, that community workforce that ideally, if all these strategies start to click, we'll see many more of those people employed locally and jobs locally. But to get a sense of what that talent base is, that skills base is, so that we can say, look, we've got X amount of people working in this sector of commuting, we can either grow this business or attract this business.
So you're going to find that information contained in this Hiring and Attention Guide? And basically, what we've done is we've...
No, I know. But is there, we don't have a good sense of what's out in the community. We don't have a good sense of skills and talent of the commuters.
Well, actually, no, this is actually what I'm saying. Within this report, what we've done is we've worked with a lot of our Statistics Canada databases. So for instance, you're right in terms of the NACs codes, the challenges with NACs codes and business licensing, where they're self-assigned. We're actually using the Business Register data, as well as NOCS, our NOCS code through Statistics Canada. So we actually have gone and ordered custom tabulations, and we have quite a few more that are coming. So what we actually have is a profile of people's occupations, the workforce's occupations, not just locally, but overall. And we actually have cross-tabbed by where they're working. So we actually know what the leakage is. And we've created a number of tips for employers in terms of attracting those commuters. There's one thing that we're actually in the process of adding into this, beyond, you know, looking at wage comparisons between Vancouver and Whistler, or looking at benefits comparison. One of the things we're actually looking at and adding in right now is the cost of commuting. And there's a great cost of commuting that goes far beyond just the financial impact of commuting. So that will be contained within the report. The great thing about this report is it's not a stagnant report. This report will be updated quarterly, and we're continuously trying to improve the product, and we're using our partners to help us do that.
One more question, I'll go to counsel there. Have you put any thought into, and there's been a debate about this forever, the benefit or of an arms-length economic development function rather than an in-house?
Yes. Yes, I've been looking at it quite a bit. I've spent a lot of time analyzing the data. The reality is, you know, if we look at the medium growth scenario for the SLRD, we're looking at a population of 34,000. That's adding 13,000 people to our local residence base, which means another 7,000 in workforce. Just to maintain, per year, we need to add an additional 400 jobs somehow. And if we were to just maintain our local workforce, in terms of those working at home and those working locally in Swamish, that would be an extra 200 per year. So I've been looking at that. And I've also been looking at, you know, the effects on the tax base, obviously our cost of living, all those considerations. And then I look at the capacity to deliver. And also, I've done a review of arms-length versus in-house delivery organization. There's pros and cons on both sides. And there's, I think the pros outweigh on the arms-length organization than the in-house delivery model, because it provides autonomy, a lot more flexibility, it allows us actually to do business. It also, I think it provides maybe a little bit more trust in terms of the business community and its connection ultimately, because we would be accountable to a board of directors generally business-led. So I think there's a lot of pros. I think it would be silly of me to say that there aren't some cons in terms of working as an integrated department within the municipality, which has been incredibly valuable since I've started. And I think that that relationship would need to continue. So yes, we've looked at it. But there's a couple of caveats in that. It would require sustainable funding. Not necessarily all from the municipality. There could be obviously other funding mechanisms in place. But you need an adequate amount of money to be able to actually operate an arms-length organization on an annual basis. I've also done a review of different organizations that are operating arms-length versus in-house delivery, to understand sort of how are they put together, what's their structure, what's most effective to ensure accountability back to the municipality. So I do have that in my back pocket.
Yeah. Well, and I think the cons are things you can figure out. The pros, I think, are really tangible reasons why you'd want to, I've always been an advocate of it, and I suspect the next councilists want to dig their teeth into that issue. I have Counselor Elliott, Counselor Schaffler, we need to move on in the, again, exactly.
Yeah, just a quick question on workforce housing. Which of our partners are involved in that right now? And what's sort of the ilk I'm imagining is?
So we have our Greater SESG, and all of them are aware of this project and what we're working on. We have a Connect Place Plan group, and that's made up of the private sector, so we have representation from Tourism Swamish and the Chamber, who also happen to be private businesses with real needs. We've consulted with the Gondola. We've had Gary come in a few times to present on workforce housing. We have Sea to Sky, we have Women's Centers. So we have a fairly extensive group, including Quest, we've been in discussions with. But what we're actually going out to do is focus groups with targeted industries, so that we can understand the workforce housing continuum. We've got the affordable housing continuum, but the workforce housing continuum is a subset of that. And essentially, understanding what their needs are, knowing that different industries have different workforce housing needs. Some of them might be short-term and temporary, some of them may be soft landings, some of them may be just long-term market housing. So understanding that and being able to feed that back under the affordable housing program would be the work that we're working.
Counselor Schaffler, and then we can move on to each other. Thanks. One of our big criticisms is hiring and doing RFPs when we know the answer already. And I'm concerned about the employment to land and space RFP, because we, it's something that's been well studied and well understood. I'm not, I'm wondering if you can expand on what the RFP would be for to understand, and, you know, is it because of specific zoning that we can manage, or how we can...
So I wouldn't call it a study. It's not a study. It's an inventory and a model. So we're actually not writing a strategy or a plan or anything like that. We actually didn't want to do that, simply because the employment land strategy provided a bunch of information. We understood that this is actually data. This is an inventory, a physical geographical inventory of our land and our space, updated from 2015 with more variables included, so that we can actually do more analysis and be able to spit out reports for specific areas, geographical areas, whether it's a business park, whether it's oceanfront, whether it's neighborhood nodes, whether it's the downtown core. And then the model is so that we can actually forecast what is the potential, what is the potential around supply, and what is the potential around demand? And are we going to be able to meet those? So that's the purpose of it. It's not, it's not a study to make recommendations, a series of recommendations on zoning changes and...
For an objective. It's taking the 2015, can I just repeat so I understand? It's the 2015, we already did that inventory, and we've rezoned a lot of it into residential housing. We've lost a lot of it. And now we're going to update it to include, just make it updated so that we know, including the few changes that we've made and what we're going to have in the next 10 years. Or is there a timeline on it?
So it's a continuous inventory, so we're going to bring an inventory up until today, so that, so we have it to today.
And it's not just land, it's...
Space, which was only, which was, it was never done before. So this is including space. So we'll be able to say X amount of square meters or meter square. And this is, and number of floors, and how much a second floor office, and it'll be all by different types, and number of different variables and considerations.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then the other piece will just be the forecasting part, which will be the future supply and demand.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Well, thanks for that update. It feels like, and it may be just my perception, but we sort of would do these one-offs in the past, we'd do this study, but we wouldn't build on it, build on it comprehensively, construct sort of the base. And it really feels like you're filling all those gaps, like gaps, and you're leveraging off the work that's being done. Very collaborative approach. I love the fact that the Chamber's leading on some things and, you know, because we can't do economic development alone in the district, it's just not possible. So good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Trees and Soils Management Bylaw. And I know there's lots of interest from the public on this one, and some people who worked on the bylaw with us. So as always, our committee meetings are very inclusive. If you want to add your comments or ask a question, just let me know and come and join us at the table. Or if the table's full, you can go to the podium as well.
Yeah, he's right here. He's back.
Is that about soils?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Caroline Chikin. I am a professional biologist and environmental coordinator with the district. I'm here today with Chris Wickham, the Director of Engineering. Today's presentation is to provide an update on the proposed tree management bylaw and the soils management bylaw. In this presentation, we will present the results, sorry. We will present the results of the public and stakeholder engagement, describe the revisions made in response to the feedback, and request direction from council to bring the two draft bylaws forward for first re-views. Okay, so it's within a municipality's legislative authority to regulate the removal of trees and the movement of soils under the community charter and the Local Government Act. There are many reasons to regulate this, primarily the protection of our green infrastructure and natural assets, and to prevent the degradation of sensitive ecosystems. The district currently regulates tree removal and soil movement through the Site Alteration bylaw, but the bylaw is ambiguous, it lacks clarity, and it's outdated and provides for limited cost recovery, leading to inadequate resourcing to administer the bylaw. So in the 2016 strategic plan, council identifies the rewrite of the Site Alteration bylaw as a strategic priority action. So the objective of the project was to update and improve the current bylaw, create clarity on guidelines and standards, and to achieve cost recovery for bylaw administration. Staff reviewed trees and soils regulations across 30 municipalities and drafted two bylaws, both of which use typical standards across local governments. The two draft bylaws were presented to council on March 7, 2017, and the staff report is attached to this agenda package. At that meeting, council gave staff direction to proceed with public engagement on the draft bylaws. Staff liaised with the district's communication team to develop a public engagement strategy based on the IAP2 participation spectrum. Staff had intended to engage with community and stakeholder groups at the IAP2 level of consult and increased this to involve at the suggestion of council at the March 7, 2017 meeting. A comprehensive public and stakeholder engagement process was conducted between May and July 2017, including a public open house, a public workshop, an online survey, and a stakeholder-focused session. The focus session had 21 people in attendance representing land developers, qualified professionals such as civil and environmental, and quarry and contractor representatives. The objective of the engagement process was to seek input from stakeholders and the public on the preliminary drafts of the bylaws, and use the feedback to further refine the bylaws before presenting back to council. The two draft bylaws were divided across six themes for comment: expanded scope and exemptions, changes to permit authority, fee structure, tree replacement, maintenance security, and The feedback received through the engagement process has been summarized in an engagement and feedback summary report included in your agenda package. A great amount of positive feedback was received in support of both bylaws and on the benefit of the bylaws for the sustainable development of the community. Overall, there were more respondents in favor than not. In general, there was support for retention of tree cover and a desire for stronger protection of significant trees, which are defined as a tree with diameter greater than 80 centimeters. And many comments were received stating that the proposed restructure... And many comments were received stating that the proposed fee structures for both tree removal and soil movement are standard practice. Also that the proposed expanded scope creates a more robust bylaw while holding landowners accountable to conduct works in accordance with best practices. Feedback was also received on how the bylaws could be improved. So the next few slides will provide an overview of the bylaws while highlighting key revisions that have been made to address concerns that were commonly heard throughout the public engagement. Starting with the Tree Management Bylaw. A permit is required for the, or proposed Tree Management Bylaw permit would be required for the removal of trees greater than 20 centimeters. So a tree is defined in the bylaw as anything greater than 20 centimeters. Exemptions to this are residential properties greater than one acre. So note that this has been increased from half an acre in the previous draft. This exemption, however, does not apply to significant trees, which are greater than 80 centimeters in diameter definition, or environmentally sensitive areas, or steep slopes. So what that means is that residential properties less than an acre would normally be exempt unless there is a significant tree on the property that the landowner wishes to remove, or the landowner wishes to remove trees on a steep slope or environmentally sensitive area. So tree permit fees are proposed as $150. Flat permit fee plus $5 per tree proposed to be cut. Then a major revision has been made to the tree retention and replacement requirements. These have been revised to include a tree density target of 50 trees per net developable hectare as an upper limit for tree replacement. So that would mean that the objective would be to retain 50 trees per net developable hectare. Or, and for context, this translates to about three to five, or two to five trees for an average residential lot. And if the tree density can be maintained, once tree removal is complete, then no tree replacement is required. If tree density cannot be achieved through tree retention, then the applicant can replant trees at a ratio of two to one for each 20 centimeter, each tree that's 20 centimeters or greater, or six to one for each significant tree, which is defined as 80 centimeters or greater, but only up to the density required. So once they reach the net developable hectare target density, then further replanting is not required. The third option would be to contribute $250 per replacement tree to an environmental reserve fund. And a bylaw to establish a reserve fund will come forward for first pre-readings in tandem with these bylaws. Maintenance bonding shall be $250 per replacement tree. Moving on to the Soils Management Bylaw. A permit is proposed to be required for moving volumes of soil greater than 30 cubic meters.
Maybe we should just address some questions around the tree portion of certain Council issues.
Thank you. So I have a little bit of history with this bylaw, or the former bylaw. I got involved in one file when I was in practice and then retired before it was actually resolved. But I came away from that process having looked at the Community Charter and the enabling legislation where it says, and I looked at it again in the weekend, and I can't quote you exactly, but nothing in the bylaw, the enabling bylaw is not allowed to restrict the use for which the property is intended. And so if you think about a single-family residential lot, for example, which might be an acre, or even a subdivision of a whole bunch of, to be a whole bunch of single-family homes, and if we zone that as a residential or for the subdivision, that necessitates, if it's covered by forest, that necessitates taking down trees to be able to use the property for the use for which it's intended, now by zoning. And so, would this be regulating that at all? Which is the first question. And the second part of that is, if you just look at, say, a one-acre lot, or one and a half-acre lot, and you say, okay, it's forested now, we're going to charge fees for taking down trees, et cetera. But on the other hand, in order to put a house there, you have to take down so many, and you need access, so that's a driveway. And you may need setbacks, because you don't want the tree growing up right in front of the living room window. And we may even have wildfire regulations coming in, or interface regulations, which require us to move the forest back even farther from this house. And so would we think that this bylaw would somehow regulate that? Because I came away from that whole process in my previous career thinking that once we zone a property, a lot of this bylaw now doesn't apply. Clearly, if it's unzoned or resource zoned or something like that, and it's forested, and somebody wants to go on and clear it, no debate about that. But when we zone it light industrial, or commercial, or residential, which requires cutting trees for the property to be used for that purpose, then the question is, does the bylaw apply to that extent?
Through the mayor, that's a great question. I had the opportunity to read a lot of different tree bylaws in this process. And they're really all over the map. There's a lot of variety in how different municipalities of our similar size and character choose to address this issue. We'd originally come at this from one potential method, which is a tree replacement ratio, which doesn't really work. As you say, for a forested lot, that you then say, yeah, you can do residential. How do you do a two-to-one replacement and still fit all the houses in? And so, some municipalities, like Brentwood, for example, just specify, basically you don't cut down any trees unless it's for a building, and this much far from the building, and a driveway, and this is the only thing you can cut. Which we thought was pretty restrictive, and not really in the character of the types of developments that we're seeing. Courtney, we found to be, to have a, they're on their second iteration. They had one of the first tree bylaws in the province, and now they've completely overhauled it a few years ago and are on their second iteration. And we used them as a model with some modification in terms of looking at the target density, and I think that's the key. So if you have a hectare of land, or your net developable area is one hectare, then you may have hundreds of trees on there. You can knock every single one of them down except for 50, and you meet the bylaw intent here. So, as Caroline said, it's two to five trees per lot, and sort of a target density of trees throughout our neighborhoods. If you have significant trees, which there was a strong feeling in the community that they wanted to really protect the significant trees over 80 centimeters in size, we said, if you protect some of those significant trees you have on that tree lot, then you get an extra bonus for that. Each one of those is worth three. If you have a lot with some really large trees, a hectare of land that you're developing, you can leave 17 really big trees and just be clever about how you place your buildings around them, and not have to plant a single replacement tree.
I don't think that answers the question.
Well, and I don't want to get into a discussion of legalities of it, because I've got one view, I'm not giving the district legal advice, of course, but I think that's something that we might want to look into. And provisions might have changed since I looked at it, which was over 10 years ago. It's just the ability for us to even regulate the trees that would come out to allow the allowable use on the property. Do we have any ability, can we even charge a fee for them? The second thing is, and I'm just thinking of my own house, when I moved in, I've had a couple of trees inside the, there was no offense, but inside the property line. And it was explained to me, and I'm not a forester either, it, second growth, which all this neighborhood is around here, doesn't have the same deep root system. And when you start isolating trees, you risk blowdown. They're great if they're in a pack and they're tight. But when you start singling them out, and I had a couple of single ones, and the guy next door was a bit of a weekend logger, took them down for me, because leaving them there was actually a danger. And sure enough, farther down the street, one was isolated and fell on the guy's roof and went storming on me. So there's that aspect as well, whether it even works to have sort of sparse tree growth around any kind of lot or any kind of improvement, really, if it isn't maybe a danger. You want to have them taken out. Well, I'll just leave you with that.
Carol, maybe I'll comment through you, Mayor. It's certainly not the intent to regulate use through this bylaw, property use. And so that is not the intent. You know, there's recognition that the zoning bylaw regulates use, and this bylaw cannot do that. So, and then just on the comment about individual trees that are no longer wind firm, because they're no longer standing in a pack, we have included a guideline in this bylaw to encourage, when trees are being retained on a property, to encourage retaining them in clumps or groups, as opposed to sort of ad hoc here and there.
And it could be the wording and the articulation of the site alteration permit was such that it left it vulnerable to legal interpretation versus a properly worded tree bylaw will articulate that in a way that is defensible against the charter and the land use. And I don't know the answer to that, but I think the specific example Council race is talking about was the site alteration permit, which was, as we know, was a quick fix strategy and really was never comprehensively thought out.
To clarify, my concern is whether we fit it within the enabling legislation.
Yes.
So not necessarily in the wording of the bylaw, but what can we regulate and what can't we regulate? That's my concern.
So, through the mayor, I guess I would only say that there are many, many tree retention and tree management bylaws in the province, and that legal review of our bylaws is standard practice.
Counselor Pryor, then, if we don't have any more trees...
On this one here, so you've got a hectare, and you're going to subdivide that into eight properties, and you want to keep 50 trees. So that's four trees per property. I mean, I kind of wonder if that's realistic? Or is it better to plant new ones? Try to save four trees per lot. Or if you're going to clump them down one end, you're going to lose a lot. I come to a racist point. One thing, when we talked about this before, and I know someone that had a lot, a business park, and just let it sit, 10 years later, there are trees acting on it. And it's a cleared lot, but the elders grow so fast that now they've got this bylaw that's going to make them pay cash and lieu on all those trees they want to take down. But that's still a bit of a flaw. And I just worry about, like, this 50 trees per development, per hectare. It's going to be really complicated, and there is going to be trying to change.
I liked in the report, the observations, one of them was the developers were already looking at how they can get around bylaws.
Well, I would just, you know, to that point, I'd rather have something that people, you know, if you can plant trees somewhere, but I know if you sub the bylaws of about three-seater trees, well, you better keep them, clear everything else out. It's potentially problems. And what if you want to put in a vegetable garden in your yard, and you've got five trees, and you don't want the vegetable garden, you don't want trees?
So, go ahead.
So I guess our intent with this is to give options, so to allow that flexibility, because you can't think of everything. So there's, you can retain trees. If you are cutting more trees than that target density would allow, you want to take out more than the 50 trees, or you want to have, the trees aren't in where you want them to be, then you can put in replacement trees in other places. Little trees aren't as good as big trees, and so it's a two-to-one replacement tree, for example. And at the end of the day, you can choose to pay into the reserve fund instead as a cash and lieu. And the idea on the cash and lieu is we tried to find a number that was approximately the cost of putting in a tree so that that was truly just an option for your particular layout of what we worked.
And Counselor Elliott, Counselor Shapalan, just let me know if anyone's in the audience that wants to ask a question.
So I guess my questions are just about, a little more about how we came up with these fees. So $5 a tree and $250 per replacement tree. And also, the cash and lieu option, where would we plant trees in lieu? Like, we don't have land. So I'm curious about where you guys think we're going to compensate for trees taken down, if they're not going to be put on property. And also, having another fund that would, I think, accumulate quite slowly, based on the fees we're charging. So how big do you think that fund gets, and how quickly, so that we can actually do compensation work somewhere else if we can't do enough? So those are my questions around this.
You'd be surprised if I would do that for the community.
So the idea behind the fees was, I guess we took a two-pronged approach. We looked at what other municipalities charge to get sort of an idea of what the expectations would be in the development community, if you will. And then, of course, we generally recover costs with our fees. So we looked at what the anticipated cost would be for manpower to administer bylaws, and also an amount to go towards, in the case of the soils, to go towards the damage to roads. So we came up with a number, we ran some scenarios, we thought that was about right. To be frank, we're going to have to look at this after year one and after year two and make sure we have the numbers right, and we are recovering the amount that we need to be. As far as where are we going to plant more trees? Probably we're not. The, we intentionally, unlike some municipalities that have a similar cash and lieu, we do go out and specifically, they have to plant trees on municipal lands. In our case, we decided that the Environmental Reserve Fund needed to be a lot broader than that. That it can be used for enhancing habitat for land acquisition. I guess mostly goes to enhancing habitat and land acquisition. So we ensured that we did have an avenue to actually go and spend the money.
So we get a net loss of trees over time? Is that, is that the goal of a tree bylaw? To lose our canopy over time?
I believe the goal of this tree bylaw is to ensure that we at least have a minimum density of trees within our built environment. Certainly, we could go with no net loss of trees within municipal boundaries. That would be a very different bylaw, and it's not what we targeted.
I just, you know, we had one presentation earlier that shows that trees provide five-to-one ratio, which is the benefit to the municipality. And we're trying to put natural assets into our asset management plan. But this bylaw seems to undervalue the role that trees play in terms of cleaning the air, providing shade, managing stormwater. So we're saying they're worth five bucks. And we're not going to replant them if we lose them. So to me, if this bylaw provides a net loss for the community, not necessarily a net gain. So it's out of balance, I mean.
Except the current status quo is, we don't really have any bylaw that regulates it.
But if we're going to have a kick at the can, shouldn't we make it better? I mean, we haven't seen this in a year.
I'm saying it's a status quo today. This is an improvement to status quo, doesn't go far enough, I hear you there. far enough, I hear you there. But currently, we don't have anything to do with it.
Again, the last engagement was last summer. We're seeing it in the last two weeks of our term. So what happened over the last year and why we had multiple cases of a can to try and get this right?
That's another question. Did you, did...
Yes, thank you. Mayor, through you, I will add that the target densities, including target densities in the bylaw, was something we heard loud and clear through the engagement. So through, you know, multiple comments were received on how moving towards a target density would be a lot better of an approach than relying on a two-to-one replacement for trees, which is why we made the change.
I just, specifically, a lot of those comments were around, that's fine if you're Richmond and willing to two-to-one or if you're in the downtown area here, say, and there's a couple trees on your lot and you want to do a two-to-one. The real challenge is, what if you're Chitai Development? How do you, there's already a certain density of trees that have grown naturally in a forested area. You can't build a bunch of houses there and hit your use and also cram in all the replacement trees on that land. And then, as you pointed out, if it's not on that land, where is it? So try to really look at practical examples of Infill Downtown or Dentville or versus very large greenfield, sort of where we felt that this was a good compromise and did the best we could do.
Counselor Shapalan and Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I think this is a good balance between the two bylaws. It's a tough thing to do all this work. We know that staff is under-resourced, so I appreciate the work that's been done on this bylaw. My question is, the $250, can you go back to that side? I'm just wondering if there's a different cost for a, for one of the significant trees as opposed, because there's cash and lieu, but there's no real distinguishing factor between significant tree and non-significant tree? So an alder would be the same as in the cost bylaw as a significant tree?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mayor. The cost would be the same, but the number of replacement trees is greater. So for a significant tree, it would be six-to-one.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, thanks. I was reading that letter that Rachel Shepard sent and I hope you're going to address some of the concerns she has. I mean, she's got a whole list of good ideas here. Exemptions, she talks about exemptions and then all the different types of exemptions that her community has that. But just to Karen's point, the kick at the can, I mean, I don't think we're going to be, I'm certainly not, I think we need more work on this than this. I mean, somebody's going to need another kick at this can.
Well, questions? Do you have a question?
Well, I was asking about that, this letter from Rachel's got a bunch of points.
And if you had a chance to...
Part of it is...
There's a new, there's a new letter from the same author, Counselor.
Another one?
No, this is the one he's reading. He's reading the old one.
About the old one? Oh, you've got a new one?
A lot of, she was reading off the old bylaw, not the new. But so she said, that's good, that's good, that's good, but she still has some small points.
Okay, but there is, you know, the exemptions. Do we have exemptions in this one? I mean, I, when I was reading all the different exemptions, you know, I thought, well, that makes sense. And that one makes sense too. And oh, so this one makes sense.
I would say that, there's lots of smiley faces, which made us feel good. Thank you, Rachel.
So simple.
She does, though, have a few bullet points, her four bullet points in the middle of her letter that she, and one of the key points on that is why the exemption for smaller lots. Courtney had a very different approach, for example, and they didn't regulate small lots. And I guess what, one of the reasons that we maintain the small lot exemption was because that's what we've gone out to the public with. We'd said that there's a small lot exemption. And so saying, all lots in town, we have to have a permit to cut a tree in your backyard, we felt was too large a change from what we went out to the public with. We did, we did increase to a one acre, she says one hectare here, it's actually, it's actually one acre, in order to, in order to strike a balance between getting into, literally into people's backyards versus regulating the amount of trees in town. That's a judgment call on where that line should be or if there should be a line.
So will there be any variances to this? I mean, will some extenuating circumstance come up and so on? Do you have any to read this?
I don't remember what the variance process, would that be through council or...
There is an appeal process described in the bylaw. And it would be through council, yes, through you, Mayor.
Any questions about the tree bylaw? Come on up to the table if you can.
There's a seat there, Mary.
Who do you recognize first? Oh, both, Mike, Jesse, whoever. Yeah, anywhere, there's a microphone at the committee tables there.
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Mayor Hinesman and council. I just want to, it's really interesting listening to all your discussion. I'm also a professional biologist and I've read a lot of tree and soil bylaws. And I think the discussion is really hitting on the regulation of trees is an incredibly emotional issue as well. Everybody is in favor of protecting trees until you get to the individual development site. And now, you know, Counselor Race, you made your valid observations of, well, we can't, we can't limit the use of the property with this bylaw. And then Counselor Elliott's comment, maybe the bylaw didn't go far enough. This is a very, very difficult area of environmental regulation at local government level. So I really like the approach that you guys have where, as Mr. Wickham said, we got to start somewhere. We have to try this, we have to see how this goes. There's such a range across all the municipalities. And I think that something like a tree bylaw really has to reflect the individual community's values around trees at the time that it's passed. And it may become more conservative five years from now. It may become less so. So it's, I just wanted to recognize that this is a very difficult, very difficult type of environmental regulation that you guys are discussing today. So kudos for the effort that's gone into it.
Thanks, Jesse.
No, I agree with Jesse's comment. No matter what happens, somebody's not going to be happy. Somebody's not going to like something. I looked at it more from, as a professional, how am I going to implement this, if this got a top? And one of the, I looked at that, for example, the density. And I looked at, say, just take an absurd example, I have 50 significant trees, my one hectare, for example, I have 50, are you going to call insignificant trees, smaller trees on the property? Well, if I was a developer, I'd take off all the significant trees right away.
Under this bylaw.
Under this bylaw. And I'd be left with my smaller trees. So now I'm going to compensate for smaller trees. Out of savings of, what, how many trees? Six times, it's twice. So I think it can be manipulated, the way this is set up right now. And not necessarily the good way. It might favor the removal of significant trees rather than retention of them. Which is sort of the option, what we're trying to think what pops and what kind of tree.
So is there not waiting, yep.
Go ahead. Sorry, can you explain that again?
Okay, you have, you're going to have density of 50 trees on our property. That's our ultimate goal.
I mean, one hectare.
Hundred, one hectare property. And there's 100 trees, say, that's an example. 50 of them is definitely 60 or smaller. Well, if I take off all the smaller trees and then I start taking two or three of the bigger trees off, I have to compensate for six-to-one. But if I took all the bigger trees off first, there are a couple of smaller ones, I only have to compensate for those two-to-one.
Got you. Thank you.
So how do you, do you have to count the significant trees first before you get the other ones or what? So there's going to be a factor, so how are you going to do this? There's going to be a lot of negotiation going on.
Unintended consequences.
Not sure I understand the scenario completely. But first, the significant trees were three insignificant trees, three less significant trees, three I love you almost as much trees. So that was an intent, the intent there was to say, actually, we really like significant trees. As far as, I cut down everything and I get to 50. And then I go back the day later and I cut down the rest. You know, I, that's not, I don't think that's how it's written. The idea is, you've got a bunch of trees there. And in, yeah, where, in a situation where you have more trees than you have in the actual target density, tell us how many trees you have left at the end. At the end, you have to head, have to get to your 50 one way or another. So I don't, you know, we can whiteboard this out, maybe. We spent a lot of time on a whiteboard, actually, going through scenarios. But I don't believe that we are incentivizing taking out the significant trees. If anything, it's the other way around. Because you can be left with 17 trees on your hectare if they're all significant and you've met your density.
So every, you leave, you leave a significant tree, it counts as three smaller trees? So 50 is a theoretical tree number? Because some trees would have, be valued at three, maybe some at two, I don't know.
Just three or one.
Three or one. Does that address your concern, Mike?
Well, I still, I don't know how you count.
And then instead of 50, you only leave 14?
Exactly. If you have 14 significant trees versus 50 insignificant trees. Does that address your concern?
Yeah, but I still think there's going to be a lot of number playing going on at the end of the day.
A lot of copper nails.
People are being whiteboarded and saying, what's our best scenario approach?
Copper nails are explicitly prohibited in bylaw, by the way.
Ted? Anything else?
Other things?
Yeah, please. I think just on that point, our intention is not to undervalue the significant trees. So as long as that's written in the bylaw and it's clear, that we're going to have that scenario that might spoke, so I think that's, that's good.
The, sorry. The idea, I think, is not that every tree you cut, you get, I don't know how to say this. I think you're coming at it from which trees do you cut and how many can you cut and that sort of thing. And we were sort of building it up from what's left over and how you get there. And maybe somewhere in the interface, it gets a bit confusing. I'd love to whiteboard that out with you.
I'd be interested in that.
Great. Do you have any other questions?
Well, starting at the beginning. Under the definition of who's allowed to actually certify dangerous trees? Right now, the way it's written, most foresters and biologists, botanists, would not qualify. Because most of those people are certified under the DC Wildlife Danger Trees Committee, which is, of course, the National Forest Operations and Development and Mission Environment and Public Safety Department, and are certified to that. And so those people are not ours, state the knots, we're eliminating...
So how would we word it in order to make sure we're including...
Just in the DC Wildlife Danger Trees, six-to-one.
Yeah, that's easy to do?
Yes, that would be, through you, Mayor, that would be easy to do.
Awesome, thank you. I don't see any objections. If you have any objections?
I noticed that hazard trees are exempt, like, simply on the law, you can cut a danger tree or with a hazard tree. But also, replacement trees may be required. So I think we, what does that mean? Does that mean always is a need, but to, you know, I think it means something, when would it be required? I mean, maybe it's required when you remove a danger tree in a pairing area, for example. But I think we have to sort of have some criteria of when that may happen. It may be, may be always.
Is there an intention behind leaving it vague or is it, do you think that's easy to put some criteria on?
That would, that would be easy to put criteria around as well, to add certain, describe conditions or criteria of when replacement would be expected.
Or when in doubt, just at the discretion of the GM. All right, Gary? He's not here. I'm joking. Keep going.
Seven, three, four. We're talking about it's not allowed to count trees that are in decline in your tree preservation park, but trees in decline are actually probably the wildlife trees. So we take up, we just need these nice, healthy, green trees that look pretty, probably not contributing a lot to, or less to have that value. Yeah, exactly. Wood, back, trees in decline. So we're going to have nice, healthy, green trees.
So how do we account for that?
There's going to be some wildlife, there's going to be a wildlife, well, maybe that comes in with the ESA.
Okay. Keep going.
Something to think about. Owners must provide a tree placement plan. I think this was identified in this paper as well. And Lola, I have to give away word. To have each individual landowner have to come to a qualified professional, you have one tree, made a paraplan for them, submitted to council, it just seems, I believe, it's going to be expensive. It's going to cost them professional time to parabort, cut a one tree. Rather than just have a permit system where I have one tree out, planting six trees, here's what they're going to be, and they just go do it. And for, I'm just talking individual, small lot, one student, one tree.
However, this bylaw doesn't fight anything under one acre, correct?
Correct.
Except significant trees.
Except significant trees.
And just to clarify, it doesn't come to council? This is a delegate.
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts on that one?
We can, yes, and that is something that, that staff had discussed internally and we can apply a threshold. So if it's greater than a certain number of trees, and if this is something that had been discussed, that then a qualified professional is required. But under that, then the landowner can manage, you know, planting a 10 or 15 trees on their own property.
And also, replacement trees, replacement significant trees is the same species as ash and loo. Well, that may not be the best case. I think at my house, I was, I have the old pine tree, the one is five years old, it would be probably fine. You know, why would I plant it there? Who knows? Perhaps simulators would have to come down. I would not plant a large pine tree there, I would plant a cherry tree or something different. So I think there has to be very easy or alternative at the discretion of the tree bylaw.
Is there an intention behind the sentence requiring the same type of tree? What was the intention?
The intention was to maintain the...
A value-for-value proposition, is that right? So I think that's a language that would be fine for that.
To allow some more flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you've got cottonwood growing in your backyard, you don't want to plant another cottonwood.
For example. You good? Thank you, Mike. Anyone else want to make some comments on the tree bylaw?
I have a quick question for the exemptions. It said the residential properties under, over one acre, or one hectare, then the exemption? One acre, I read that.
The exemption is one acre, under one acre. The one hectare is the fifty trees per developed property.
Right. And does that apply to like residential properties across boards of rural, residential and suburban? It doesn't apply to mud or any other, other zones?
It applies to all, through you, Mayor, all zones.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
It would seem intuitively that the location of a tree is somewhat important. So it's, you know, cutting down a cedar tree here, does it equate putting another cedar tree over there or does location matter somehow?
Through you, Mayor. I think there are situations where it does matter. For example, if it's adjacent to a water course or a stream, but there are other instances where historically a tree has grown, such as what Mr. Nelson was describing a minute ago, where the location of the tree ends up being awkward or a hazard to, or could be a hazard in the future, it's too close to the building and it would be better to move it. So I think it's a site-specific answer.
Thanks. We're running a little bit behind. If we can move on to... Thanks, we're running a little bit behind, if we can move on to the soil bylaw.
Great, thank you. Okay, so soils management bylaw. Under this draft bylaw, a permit is required, or would be required, for moving volumes of soil greater than 30 cubic meters per site per year. So this threshold is approximately three dump truck loads, which you see on the screen. Anything less than that does not require a permit. However, this exemption does not apply to floodways, environmentally sensitive areas, or steep slopes. So if it's a volume less than 30 cubic meters and the landowner wishes to deposit this material on a steep slope or in an environmentally sensitive area or in floodway, a permit would be required.
So just clarification on the slide, Councilor Park?
I'm just wondering about invasive species.
Oh, we're going to get into that.
Invasive species as well, oh, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah.
Through you, invasive species, so not weed is called out in the exemptions as well.
So we're running late, let's, if you see a question, clarification, focus on the slide. Ask the question, if not, hold your questions, it may be answered throughout the presentation on this slide.
Yep, the floodways, as we did, the flood hazard management plan, but that's basically all our economic development area. Anybody that is storing higher volumes? Are they, well, is there any exemption for, yeah, the pre-loads or theirs?
Through you, Mayor.
I think we're going to get to that.
Yes, there, there is an exemption for preload, so that it's just the removal, sorry, just the deposit of the preload that would be subject to the fees, not the removal.
And storage of gravel for businesses that are, for instance.
Let's, let's, let's let staff continue, hold, hold questions, yeah.
Okay, so the permit fees for a permit under this proposed bylaw would include a flat rate of $150 plus a volumetric fee of 30 cents per cubic meter. This has been reduced from the previous draft of the bylaw, which proposed 35 cents per cubic meter. The fee cap has also been reduced from 200,000 cubic meters to 100,000 cubic meters. So what that means is if there's more than 100,000 cubic meters being moved, the fee would only apply to up to 100,000 cubic meters.
Which is $30,000.
Not the volume greater than that.
Which is $30,000.
Correct. Okay, so, these revisions were made based on feedback we received, particularly with respect to the new flood construction level bylaw that has recently been introduced and resulting in more soil moving within the district. Another major comment was in relation to the security fees previously set at $5 per cubic meter. And this has been revised to flat fees based on soil volume, as shown in the table on the screen. And volumes greater than 40,000, the security would be 30 cents per cubic meter, so it would be volumetric. This is a security deposit that the landowner then receives back once the work has been completed and inspected, as having no impact to the adjacent areas.
Can I just go back to that slide? So does the security required actually cover the, the cost, the fee? It's equal?
That's a great question, and I think this is another one where it's site-specific. So if the impact that's caused by, by some sort of violation or infraction is smaller scale, then it would cover it. I think there would be instances where if it was on a large scale, that this amount may not cover it.
Because we've had situations where landscape bonding has just been left on the table because it costs them more to do landscaping and they just forget bond and we didn't get the results. So I just want to make sure that the security actually covers the penalty to a certain degree, or at least.
And it, we're, we're trying to strike the balance between, you know, something like the landscaping fees or subdivision development control bylaw, bonding where, bonding rather, where we are getting a detailed estimate and reviewing that estimate and looking at worst-case scenario and everything, and just being able to efficiently administer this bylaw. So in this case, we're looking at the erosion and sediment control isn't working. It's two years down the road, they abandoned the property, and we have to go in and do work on it and that sort of thing. So it's, it's harder to estimate what exactly that work might be. And, and so this is an attempt to get practical numbers and allow us to administer bylaw. And at the moment, we have no bonding whatsoever.
Thank you.
All right, there are additional bylaw implications. The first is establishment of environmental, an environmental reserve fund through a bylaw with funds going towards habitat restoration and enhancement, potentially land acquisition for habitat preservation. Other bylaw amendments include the fees and charges bylaw for fees, municipal ticket information bylaw, and notice enforcement bylaw for ticketing and enforcement, and the land development procedures bylaw for application requirements. Staff believe that these revisions have resulted in a proposed tree management bylaw and soils management bylaw that are aligned with council's strategic objectives, address the district's needs as a growing community, while remaining conservative across other municipalities, and incorporate the feedback from stakeholders. Several policies in the district's current official community plan support this work, notably, and I'll just read out what's highlighted on the screen, the bold ones. Employ comprehensive environmental permitting and environmental management guidelines to assess development. Pursue creation of an environmental conservation fund. Protect and maintain the integrity of green infrastructure and sensitive ecosystems. Encourage the preservation and management of forested areas and tree stands. Control site alteration activities through robust regulations and prioritize retention of healthy, mature vegetation during redevelopment wherever possible. So the recommendation before council today is that council approve the following resolution that the District of Squamish staff bring forward, the tree management bylaw and soils management bylaw, substantially in the form presented to the committee at the whole today for first pre-readings on October 16.
Thank you, Councilor Park.
I, I didn't see anything clear on the invasives. So you leave three, you're allowed to take three loads out of your backyard, but that is a permit. And I'd rather not leave my backyard.
So, so there's quite a bit of invasives in the bylaw. Do you want to maybe speak to that more specifically, just to give you?
Yes. Pulling up my copy of the bylaw here. So invasives are, through you, Mayor, invasives are addressed in the bylaw. And the bylaw does explicitly state that any soils containing invasive species do require a permit.
That's for honest people.
Yeah, please come on up and join us if anyone wants to. I know we've got a few people sitting at the table that would like to speak, just let me know, go ahead.
I'll reiterate Susan's question.
Maybe just introductions also.
Sorry, Greg Parker with Coast Aggregates. On the stockpiles for businesses, is the intention to tax those materials as well? So like concrete production, asphalt production, highway maintenance?
Not at all.
Because currently, it's not, it's not stated in the bylaw.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point.
We could add a statement, though.
The deposit of that material at its final destination is certainly the intent. It is not our intent to, uh, the stockpiles for, say, an aggregate company or landscaper or whatever, through the regular use of our, of their business, that we be regulating that, that is not our intent. So, you know, we can make sure that's explicitly in the bylaw.
And then would that extend to delivery if already mixed concrete and asphalt?
Concrete and asphalt, no.
So once it's turned into those final products, it's not considered soil under this bylaw?
Yeah, go ahead.
Kim Willeam with the Squamish River Watershed Society, thank you, Mayor and Council for having us here today. A question on exemption for restoration enhancement works. I didn't see the list of exemptions. So oftentimes in our projects, we're moving large quantities of fill material. By its nature, it's already heavily regulated and in accordance with best practices. So just wondering if it is exempt or if that was a consideration. And as well, oftentimes on development sites, there's enhancement work going on, which again is heavily regulated by its nature.
I don't believe the intention was to do that. Can we make sure, is it, is it explicit in the bylaw?
Yeah, yes, we can, and I believe there's an exemption in the tree management bylaw. And we can confirm that there's also one in the soils management bylaw. And if not, we can have, yeah.
We, we do, sorry, just to clarify, though, we, we do have to be a little bit careful about how we, how we word that remediation. Lots of people can volunteer into remediation works, we need to be very clear that it's, it's through a DFO authorization, or, or some, some level of oversight.
Have it had enhancement, I think that's where Kim Willeam is.
Well, and I've, I've seen it in other bylaws and other jurisdictions where it's read, if done for the purposes of enhancement or something to that effect. And enhancement can be defined in, in the bylaw itself, so.
It's that definition, I'm scared.
Yeah, exactly, and I'm happy to provide, I'm familiar with other examples from the jurisdiction.
Speak loudly, just because the microphone is speaking out.
Oh, yes, familiar with examples from other jurisdictions, if that's helpful.
Great. Why don't we go to Eric and then to Mike?
Eric Anderson, speaking for the Squamish District Forestry Association. I'll speak at a fairly general level. I'm aware that some of our member local companies have, may have, and I trust they have, spoken on specific matters for the engineering department. So the forest industry over the next years will be replacing and building critical infrastructure facilities. These are worth several million dollars each, and they're large-scale projects. My, my comments really address the impact of the bylaws on the economics of developing sites for economic development purposes. And this doesn't only concern the forest industry, it may, may in future concern, for example, DC rail yards. As an example, there are several references to greenfield sites and disincentivizing clearing of greenfield sites. That's perfectly understandable, we're very much on board with the goals of, of the bylaws. But we have in the Chikai Fan, looking, we're looking ahead to be developing for industrial uses, light industrial and other forms of use, up to 20 acres of land that is presently under tree cover. There's references to environmentally sensitive areas. Well, Site B, at least, certainly the waterfront interface of it, is an environmentally sensitive area, where we'll be requiring major fill. And this is a project that's probably imminent and has been in, in the planning for a while. Chikai Fan's a little bit more distant in, in preliminary planning. The, there's discussion of exemptions, the report from the.
Eric, do you want to stop to address each issue so they don't lose focus?
Actually, my measure is really reject the exemptions thing, so that may be best what we might zero in on.
Okay, keep going, yeah.
There are discussions on a few pages on exemptions, page 27 and 28, specifically respecting the forest industry. And there's four options discussed, whether industrial activities, specific industrial activities could be, could be exempt. And this is really applied to both bylaws. Whether an industry sector can be exempt, which there is precedent for, or Site B. Or there's a list, which Counselor Chappell has already referred to on page 11, of specific types of activities that might be considered for exemption. Now, just to, to close here, Section 4.2 discusses the procedure and protocol for exemption, the criteria. And it largely comes down to the district manager, the general manager, and there's reference to qualified professionals and so on. So the issue has been raised already in your consultation process of whether we're going to a case-by-case application of the bylaws or, and criteria for exemptions. So in general, perhaps you might speak to where, where you've landed on the matter of exemptions for the forest industry. And again, we're, we're, we're thinking about what, what are the impacts on the economics of developing these large sites? Thank you.
And, and just to add to that, whether bylaws, so bylaws particularly in other communities, be specifically the forest industry or the other industry, I just try and understand the precedent.
I don't know the answer to that. The trees bylaw would be exempt under a tree farm license, for example, or a community managed forest, or, or that sort of thing. The soil bylaw, we don't have an exemption for industry or any particular industry. Other than if you have an industry that, that we talked, talked about before in terms of that as its business. But we did not intend to exempt the forestry industry, for example, from this bylaw, from the soils bylaw.
So on page 27 and page 28, there are three paragraphs outlining scenarios and rationales for exemption. And see, see, these sites are replacing facilities that were going to be lost to us through district policy. The OCP, for example. So this has been discussed and, and in our, in our correspondence. So the economic development, not residential purposes, is highlighted in the first paragraph on page 27. The need to develop new green, greenfield sites in relation to the old Squamish Front Peninsula Subarea Plan. And finally, the fact that our industry's moving, moving of fill and soil involves roads that are not district roads and not maintained by the district. So there's, we're not going to be adding to the pressures and burdens in that regard as other types of movement of soils would.
Can you explain that one more? Because besides the highway and forest service roads, we maintain all the roads. What roads are you talking about?
The road to Site B, including the railway crossing, are not maintained by the district.
Yeah, we don't maintain private roads.
I would, I would say that the roads leading up to that private road are maintained by the district. And some by the province, the highway itself by the province. I think Site B is an interesting, particular case. Maybe it's outside the scope, the scope of this meeting, it's a single property on, in, in the district, it's an important one. But I think in general terms, the idea is that if soil, large amounts of soil are being moved around, then the way that it's moved around and the way that, where it's placed, how it's placed, where it comes from, how erosion and sediment control is handled is important. And we have seen some examples in very recent history of large, large soil movements where, for example, erosion and sediment control failed and, and we had plumes in the environment. So like, this is, this is important stuff. Scaling it by the number of cubic meters makes sense in the standard practice throughout, throughout the province because it takes more effort to, to review and to monitor larger-scale movement than it does smaller.
Of course, that doesn't speak to the fees. We're quite in alignment with your goals that you just alluded to. But this is a heavy cost burden. And we're being forced into these situations through district policies, not by choice.
Thanks, I'm going to, I've got Mike and then Doug, you can.
I just want to echo the brilliant comments about having exemptions for, I don't know, approved enhancement plants and approved invasive species plant and plant. And under one section here, I mean, it sounds very limiting, no. New soil or other materials should be deposited in wetlands. I mean, it sounds like a no-brainer, but materials include large quantity debris and other things which you would normally put in as part of our enhancement program. So simply adding a line up to that, except for approved enhancement plans would probably suffice.
Or we can take them entirely from the bylaw.
Yeah. Finish that.
Yeah. Thank you. Justin, Karen.
Thank you. So Mr. Anderson, this discussion sort of raised a thought with me. So if you look at something like the oceanfront, which is going to require, I'm told, around 200 and somewhat 1,000 cubic meters of something, soil or fill of some kind. And we would charge a fee for that, presumably by the cubic meter. And so now I'm wondering, I tend to agree with Mr. Anderson on the intent. You don't want a mess. You know, we want to kind of make sure that this doesn't create a mess in the movement of soil. But I'm not sure that we want to stick all these landowners with double jeopardy because we have one bylaw that says you've got to lift your land to a certain level. And now another bylaw that says, and by the way, when you're complying with that bylaw, we're going to charge you so much a cubic meter to do it. And that's kind of all over the district really because of our flood construction levels and so forth. The oceanfront is going to be putting dirt into the water to bring it up to above water to create a park and so forth. And Site B, I'm not exactly familiar with what they're planning, but it sounds like more or less the same thing. And so I'm starting to wonder whether that's really fair, whether we should actually be doing that. I can understand the intent of making sure we don't watch a mess being made. And there might be a small administrative cost to that. Whether that's in line with those fees or not, I'm not sure. Specifically to some of these larger things, when we require that fill, you know, it's not like it's an option. It's not like somebody moving fill around just for the heck of it or filling in a big hole. I mean, we require an awful lot of fill. Waterfront landing is probably the same thing. It's coming in by garchlor, as we all know. So do we really want to charge for that? And it's kind of a rhetorical question.
Yes. I agree that we are, I wouldn't say it's double jeopardy. I would say that we, in the last year, have said we need more fill in the district than we have in the past because of flood construction levels. And in the same year, we are looking at fee structure for site alteration that charges per cubic meter. The intent, and we think we've got the math right, is to simply recover our costs. And moving that amount of soil around the district is going to have an impact not only on the roads, but it needs frankly more revenue coming in than we currently have in order to monitor it and in order to administer the bylaw. So the only intent of this bylaw is to make sure that all of that soil that is going to have to be moved around and added to places and built up is done properly and just recover enough cost to allow us to do that.
I'll go to Karen.
I mean, yes, industry is important and yes, development is important, but also covering our costs is important. And I think with the cap that's in place here, it is a reasonable cost of doing business for those large projects. I think my question to staff is what are we thinking about in terms of enforcement? We clearly don't have the capacity right now. Now we're going to implement bylaws that have to do with trees and soils. So is that boots on the ground or are we starting to think about more like aerial surveillance and using photographs and people sitting at desks and analyzing what's happening versus?
Is there going to be a drone in next year's budget?
Right. Well, I mean, communities are moving away from boots on the ground to finding different ways to monitor. So I'd just like, be curious to know what we're thinking of in terms of enforcement.
That's a great question. Through the mayor, we really have two tools for enforcement. Primary line of defense at the moment is through our qualified environmental professionals who are required to be monitoring the works. Sometimes works are happening with nothing, with no approvals, with no QEP or whatever. And those, we're largely complaint-based, including staff driving past things going, what's that? And so the, there are requests working their way through the budget process for further boots on the ground to help administer this, which would be covered by these fees, including more help from bylaw. Obviously, that's, we're very early in the budget process. But that's the intent, is that these fees cover not only the people sitting in the desk administering, but also the boots on the ground administering. We hadn't thought of it wrong, though. Thank you.
Karen?
Yes. Yeah, I agree. I mean, we should be getting some cash out of the big projects. And with the cap, like Karen says, it's not endless. But, you know, and in some cases, Site B, I don't know how many acres will be created when they start filling, they're going to create land, same with that, so we see create land which is valued. But on something like any one of these really big ones, so they have 500,000 worth of meters of gravel coming in over a four-year period. So is it one permit, one-shot deal, and then that's it? Or like at Waterfront Landing, they got phase one, now they're into phase two, so they're going to bring in fill for that, then they go into three street, do they get hit again? Or is it?
Through you, Mayor. There are time limits on the permits. There could be a request made for extension of the permit. And there's also language in the bylaw that references the phasing of development. So if a development is phased, then it would only be the current phase that the permit would be issued for.
My question is a couple of points through the fee structure. You've referenced several times about the road maintenance in the district of Squamish. And I know prior to my time here in Squamish and probably a lot of council, there was talk before about a fee for like the Squamish terminals and targeting certain trucks. That is definitely one part, but we have the garbage trucks, the lumbered trucks. How do you intend to make this apply to all road users equally?
Through the mayor, we don't.
Well, I interest only, years ago, we tried to do a per-truck thing and industry bought it, so we didn't do that.
Well, it's very, it's easy to track the trucks for gravel. It's very hard to track everything else. The second is, you talk about purchasing other lands with this money towards the district. Is that not outside of a bylaw and into a tax to take that money from one thing and do something else with it?
That may be a pristine question. I don't think she was listening.
Sorry, we were just commenting.
The reserve, the money's collected, go into an environmental reserve. And we can either buy land or do rehabilitation budgets. The question was, is that outside of the legislative taxing authority? Does that become a tax and not a fee?
No, we can, as a municipality, we can establish a reserve for multitude purposes. So that is definitely within legal, urban legal acceptable choices.
But it's not directly related to the impacts of that?
Generally, there would want to be some correlation with fee collection, different from the reserve necessarily, but we are putting it back into remediation vegetation, rehabilitation, things along that line. So that's why we did structure the reserve. The reserve itself is fairly often-ended, but these fee structures are going back to purposes of the fee.
So just, and just to clarify and add to that, so the fees are just a cost capture?
Yeah.
The reserve is only for the cash and loo on trees? And/or for other donations or other things can come into that reserve? In these bylaws, it's just the cash and loo, which is a different thing from fees?
The district means very difficult to frame the cost recovery part for roads and for bylaw enforcement around what's attributed to the impact of moving these soils over municipal infrastructure. Like how do you quantify what that cost is to the district to recover that cost?
We estimate it. It's hard. It's not easy. We targeted a maximum around $200,000 in a year for impact to roads. It's tied to the cubic meters that are moved in a year. So if we end up in a downturn and there isn't as much soil moving around, then there will be less captured, of course, but purely an estimate.
Eric?
Just a quick point. There's reference in the engagement process report to identifying, mapping, and adding heritage trees, the definition of significant trees. I'd like to suggest that that's a rule for another complementary bylaw. There's not all significant trees are large trees. Not all heritage trees are large trees. So I think that's a future project that may complement this one and clarify what this one may be able to or may be intended to achieve.
Any more questions or comments? So staff, we had some good suggestions on how to tweak and improve the bylaw. I think it's worth at this point bringing it back to council consideration. We had first three readings. If council doesn't want to support it, they don't have to. But I think at this point, bringing it back would be great. I think with the, with the mayor, or some clarifications and a lot of comments that were made, I think Jesse and a few others said it. I mean, you're never going to piece everyone in these bylaws. You're always going to have people who want more regulation, always people who want less regulation. I think we have to have a starting point. And I'm not precluding where council may go on this, but I think this is a good starting point. It seems like a very measured approach. It doesn't go far enough in some things. My point for you, probably not, but I think it's a starting point. Go ahead.
I would just like to add that I received an email this morning, which was forwarded from an email just after 5:00 on Friday about this meeting today. Although I had taken part in the public consultation, you know, I received that email secondhand early this morning where else I would have been more prepared for the meeting. But having been part of that public consultation, you know, I was surprised to not know about this opportunity earlier to be able to come and speak. And I also wonder how many other people that it affects didn't have that opportunity as well.
I don't know if we have to do that yet.
Through you, Mayor. Staff have maintained a stakeholder list throughout this project, and stakeholders were welcome to add their emails to that list. Sincere apologies that your specific email got missed. I'm not sure how that would have happened.
When these comes back, when these bylaws come back, it would be helpful to have a few scenarios. So to Mike's point about if you've got 100 trees and you need 50, can we actually whiteboard some of those things and bring back some scenarios so that council has comfort that maybe people can't get around what Mike was saying?
Yes, we'll also call Mike and talk to him about it.
That'd be great.
Because I do think we're trying to preserve the meaningful trees there and provide flexibility. And so it'd be great to just see some of those scenarios.
As with our bylaws, our intention is sometimes hard to articulate exactly. And we live and learn, and you test a bylaw, and we realize, oh, we need to tweak this. And they're very much live, organic processes. They're not definitive. We're constantly updating bylaws based on experience and learning. So you're going to have to come to the table and join us. No, it's before we start. Just introduce yourself.
Brian Liu with Dini. I have a question regarding the, I guess, timing of the calculations of the volumes. Because with a site alteration permit, this is usually before we do detailed design for the site. So would this permit that's required only be for a site alteration in the preliminary engineering and earthworks of the site? Or would that quantity be updated during detailed design? Or is there a separate volume that needs to be accounted for after the site gets finalized in terms of the grading?
Yeah. Through you, Mayor. Great question. Thank you. I think that the intent is that as soon as the landowner is ready to proceed with works, that the preliminary values will be acceptable for issuance of a permit. If there are revisions that need to be made to those values along the course of the works that are major in scope, then there would need to be a new permit issued or an amendment to the existing permit.
Okay, so a site alteration permit is, my understanding is typically it happens for earthworks activities. But there is also movement of material later to build the roads. So would that be covered under, would that require a permit as well? Or is it simply only for earthworks activities at the beginning?
Through you, Mayor. For building permits as well.
Okay.
Thank you. So I'll just move that we endorse, sorry, that staff bring forward the trees and soils bylaw, management bylaws with comments as per today to next week's work basis, for consideration. Do you have a second? Go to Mike Penn. Yeah?
Just briefly, and I generally agree with this. I still am concerned about the applicability of the legislation. And I would be more comfortable when I come to vote next week on this, knowing how much this bylaw can extend to, whether it can only extend to kind of forest that's left outside of a building envelope or wooded areas. I take the point that there are other bylaws around the province, so obviously they must comply probably. But if it's, I understand if it's unzoned land, there's probably not an issue. But if you had something like the Chikai Fan, for example, which we're now partly through the zoning on, they're going to have to have roads, they're going to have to have building sites. And does the bylaw apply to every tree in that larger parcel? Or does it only apply to what's left after you set up the building envelopes or the road network? If it's something like that, does it only apply to part of the site? So that's kind of the question that I have in my mind after reading that section that you charted. And so I just look for some kind of clarification on that going forward.
And in terms of process, would legal have a look at this prior to first reading? Or do they have a look at third reading and prior to adoption?
Typically prior to first reading.
After third reading, so the final reading. Well, I think we consider, this is the type of bylaw we can consider all three readings at once.
Yeah.
I think you said prior to first reading?
Yes. So you'd have them look at it prior to next week? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, mine too. I'll call the question. Thanks, everybody. Oh, who's in favor? Opposed? Mr. Perry's? Thank you very much. Really thoughtful contributaries, if that are words. Contributions to the conversation. Very much appreciated. So I'm just going to suspend the meeting quickly, and we are back in our committee of the whole meeting. Hopefully, this will be very quick.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. My name is Yana Solnichvus, Director of Community Planning. And with us today is Terrell Gillespie, who is now a contract planner. And she is helping the district putting together a consultation plan for the Lagers East Subarea Plan. And I'll turn it over to Terrell to make her presentation. It's very brief.
We'll be very brief. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Heitzen, councillors. It's really great to be here. What we're looking for today is support to begin the subarea planning process for the Lagers East neighborhood. Just the little highlighted section up there. Loggers East is the little kind of buff area there, but the sort of northern half of it is currently under construction or recently built or is in a reselling process right now. So, um, it is such a pleasure to read the new OCP. Thanks, everyone. It really lays out what is required of a subarea plan. So we would like to see a subarea plan containing everything on this list, pretty much everything that's outlined in the OCP. We have to emphasize different things. This is a very particular neighborhood with many special attributes to it. We'd be looking for a land use plan that would include industrial, agricultural employment, and residential land uses, including density targets and housing typology for complete buildout of this small neighborhood. An inventory of natural hazards and hazard mitigation and response strategies. Identification of environmentally sensitive areas for protection and restoration. Have a little bit more about that topic in a bit. Identification of recreational assets and opportunities for protection and enhancement of those. Overall, we'll be considering the healthy built environment principles. So looking throughout the plan to include walkability, concentration uses, focus on good transportation opportunities, accessible, affordable housing and food, opportunities for social connection. Agricultural opportunities are really going to be important for this little neighborhood. So looking at ways to continue and enhance those. And also to continue the rural uses, such as kennels that's ongoing in that neighborhood. Another big one will be coming up with strategies for stormwater, groundwater drainage and water quality issues. This, again, I'll just have a little, tiny bit more say on that. So this is really what I want to talk about today, is an engagement plan for this neighborhood. This is a small area that's had relatively stable uses in, in recent history. There have been a few contentious developments that have happened there recently. And it's really going to be important to have a meaningful and authentic engagement process. It's always something to strive for, like this is something I really want to see happen in this neighborhood. So I envision a very high level of engagement, collaboration as per the IAP2 spectrum. And under that level of engagement, stakeholders would be empowered early in the process. And their community-led recommendations and decisions are to be used to the maximum extent possible in the plan. Within the framework of the OCP, which kind of would set the boundaries on what would be considered. So to achieve collaborative public engagement, a strategic approach to planning is proposed. I'd like to see a series of workshops happen with the goal of leading the community through a process of visioning for the future, first of all, and then establishing objectives and ways to measure those objectives. And then determining different possible alternative scenarios that will be evaluated based on the objectives that were come up with, or were part of the earlier process. And how that ultimately measures against the vision for the future of the neighborhood. I envision the first workshop as being used to gauge community interest and tailor subsequent events to the group's size and interests. I'd like to emphasize the importance of flexibility throughout this planning process. Be responsive to community needs and be able to address any unforeseen issues that may come up. I'd also like to have an open house happen after the workshops are complete. And that would be an opportunity to present a draft subarea plan for community consideration and revision before a proposed subarea plan would come to council for consideration. Just a little bit about a few prerequisite studies that would need to happen before this engagement process could start. It's going to be important to figure out what's specifically happening in the area. And an environmental assessment is going to be really key to knowing what assets are there that need to be protected and really built strongly into the plan. It's also a very challenging area for groundwater drainage issues. So, um, it'll be important to, I think, have a geotech come in first and do an assessment of the area to ask big questions that we don't know. Like, you know, basic things like soil type. And we know in the area there's some changes happening, but if we can look in recent history and figure out, you know, is the land sinking? Or is the water rising? And just kind of answer those, those big questions and identify what the risks are for the planned area and also the surrounding watershed. So that'll be key information that'll need to feed into the plan. And I'd like to have those consultants involved throughout the planning process, first providing these recommendations at the beginning. And, sorry, sorry, laying the groundwork, providing the recommendations. And then later on in the process, once some, uh, likely scenarios have been imagined, to then provide their expertise to the evaluation that will be happening with the public. Okay, I think that's about as quick as I can keep it, but I'd love to answer questions.
I have Counselor Chappell, then Counselor Frye, then Counselor Ray.
Thank you. This is a study led by, who wants to go up in the area?
Yes, so we've secured funding from two, or I think it's more than two property owners who have development interests. And the, we've had pre-application meetings. This is how this whole thing started. Where we've communicated to the applicants that in order to consider any future density in this area, we need to go through a subarea planning process. So thus far, we've secured some money to sort of define what resources the district needs to allocate to this. And then what's going to be involved in the subarea planning process. And then if we get the council's approval, I expect that we would be then securing a more funding commitment from these property owners to keep this moving. But the district is in, in charge of the process. Terrell works for the district, not for the proponents.
Are there other, would it be more prudent to remove bias by choosing the areas in a list that are in need of subarea plans and have proponents putting money into a pot instead of subarea planning their own area? So that removes a bias and actually serves the community better because the areas that we need subarea plans on get subarea planned. And then we don't have to worry about bias. It's just that funding goes into an area that is more needed by the community. Or I'm just wondering how we lay out those lists? Or if we just, first proponent in the door that wants to do a development, we let them do a subarea plan and we pay for it with their signing?
If I may answer that question. So, yes, ideally, we would be budgeting for subarea planning, and we are proposing that in our budget. Some areas are more time-sensitive than others. This is one of them, where we do have residentially zoned properties. So in the absence of a subarea plan or district intervention of some kind, we could be looking at a subdivision process. And by the time we're ready to subarea plan, there might not be much to plan for.
Thank you, that's a very dense.
Yeah, I'm really happy to see this. And I think back to the hummingbird development, and that's probably what spurred this conversation. It just shows you how you have to get priorities off the table before this comes up. But anyway, I'm really happy to see it. Um, your map there, I couldn't tell if it captured the site. I guess it does for the, you know, the ski dump guys out there.
No, it's south of that. That's, that's the lot north of Brayden.
Well, that's a lot more.
So it's just everything.
So this goes all the way and includes the police station, then, no?
No, no. Everything east of Walters Lane.
And, okay. Well, that's all good. And so, you know, like, the trail connections and all the habitat in there, will you do the habitat stuff first because of all those creeks?
Yeah, I think it'd be important, sorry, through you, Mayor Heintzen, to have that environmental assessment. It's kind of, there's a lot of puzzle pieces to fit together here. And providing the community with as much information as possible before, before the starting engagement process starts will be key. Otherwise, the results won't be as meaningful.
No, I'm sure happy to see it. That's great.
Thank you. And I have two questions. One is why not a slightly larger area? And in particular, in the report, there was a different slide that had a couple of CD zones in the pink crosshatching that I don't know where it's for, but whether or not they might have an impact in this area. And so that, that was my first question. The second question was on the engagement. And generally, I didn't have a problem with the process, except that once we go through the engagement, then the subarea plan would be drafted. And then it would go back to the public before it comes to council. And I thought at that point, it would be better if it came to council before it went back to the public. Council may have some different views than the public. And if you're allowed to go to the public and then they kind of get going down one road, it's a little hard sometimes to re-go them back and send them off in another direction. So I think maybe an earlier council intervention, just before it goes, the drafted plan goes back to the public. But I was curious, you know, I mean, maybe, I know bigger is, is more work. But I'm wondering if, you know, with those CD zones above there, which don't show on this slide, whether there's other things, and north of that, again, there's industrial. And whether all of that would ever kind of impact what we might want to see on that and take that into consideration.
If I may, through you, Mayor. Ask Terrell, by the way, very good comment on coming back to council. I think definitely we didn't build this in. It's kind of preliminary, but that was the intention, to keep checking in with councillors and go through the process.
Especially since I imagine a responsive, flexible process that I would like to come back to council at several stages throughout to make sure you know what's happening throughout.
And then on the second point of the larger area, so we are going to look at the larger area. The focus right now looks like this is, this is the area that has still, that has been developed or that sort of still has a question mark, you know, versus the industrial areas up north. But I think, as Terrell said, we're going to keep this flexible at this point and, and find out once we start studying the area. So this is, our expectation is that it's probably this area that needs most direction. But we are going to look at the larger picture.
Can I go in?
Yeah. So just, this box includes that big RS1 zone?
Yes.
And then, in terms of agriculture, in the engagement, can we ask questions about what would incentivize people to keep their land for agricultural use? So it's not in the ALR. So what would, what would, what would make people want to keep it that way? And for how long? So just getting a sense of whether it's even viable in that neighborhood or whether any of the landowners, and, and if there's openness to land lease scenarios to farmers or helping us with a farm sort of co-op learning. So I would just, because we've got a food policy council, they may be able to help you with those types of questions and to be involved in maybe in some way. I agree with Doug's point about coming back to council. And then also, when we do neighborhood planning, it's a great opportunity to connect neighbors. And I know you've got like an icebreaker in there. But we know through Alloex's work on emergency management that the more connected the neighborhood is, the more resilient they are after a disaster. So it's really being conscious of how are we connecting neighbors through this? Even though it's open to everyone, but how do we connect the folks? Maybe we distinguish between the folks who are actually in the neighborhood and those participating from other sides.
That's actually the, the icebreaker that I'd like to do does exactly that. But yeah, I think that'd be important at every meeting. Especially since I, it would be a lot to ask volunteers to come to every workshop. So I'll set them up in such a way that they could pick and choose. But that'll, so that'll have to happen in each one.
Yeah, and if there's any outreach we want to do, that's a great, they're captive audience. So if there's emergency management information or good neighborhood bylaw information that we want to, like just having it there, why would we waste that opportunity?
Excellent. So you, do you need a, yeah, we, so there is a motion that we endorse the work plan for the subarea planning process for Loggers East. And I went in today's meeting. And, and it says if funding of the project becomes available. How, remind me, how much do you think the project would be?
So we've secured a little bit of money to do this initial work, to get Terrell to help us out. And then as we go further, we were waiting essentially for this meeting with council so that more funding could be secured from the property owners.
Okay, and if not from the property owners, are you suggesting it was an extra budget?
It wouldn't be, it's the second on our priority list of subarea plans. So the first one would be, I believe, the Gurbaldi Estates for subarea planning. So it would be a few years down the road. And that's okay, too. But at this point, it looks like there's funding available. I think anything we can learn in this beginning process will be useful for the district in the long term.
Someone like to move that? Moved by Counselor Ray, Stephanie by Counselor Frye. You have a question, Eric? Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Heintzen. In the list of the issues to be covered in the subarea plan, the final bullet is consideration of opportunities to increase connectivity to other neighborhoods in Squamish. There's reference to active transportation, but my question is whether that might conceivably include consideration of a new arterial road to Vallet Cliff. In the 1990s, some preliminary work was done, and it was in fact included in the OCP in 1998, but removed later because the active development at that time, crumpet woods, didn't trigger the volumes that were required. But there is a report from about 2010 by Bunton Associates on this route, and it's been discussed for decades. I just wonder whether there would be an opportunity.
I'm glad you brought it up because it was in my mind. It always Counselor Chappell's mind. And not just road connectivity, but trail connectivity. And when we use these neighborhood plans, they really do need to spoke out from the neighborhoods. But I think that route in particular should be part of this.
It certainly is on, on our mind. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I'll call the question out. Those in favor? Opposed, Mr. Carries?
Thank you.
Last item on our agenda, it was a letter, it was spurred by a letter from Squamish Connector that Counselor Elliott forwarded. I did send a letter immediately last week, just to reiterate. We've sent this letter before to the passenger safety transportation board saying Rayhound is closing down. You need to process these things quickly. This isn't an actual, this is a clarification needed. So I'm not sure if anyone else wants to follow up on this. I just wanted to get the letter out as soon as possible because everything counts right now in terms of counting down to October 31st. So I sent the letter out last week. But Counselor, do you want to add to that, or?
Um, I just wondered if we had alerted Jordan?
Yeah, I've had conversations with Jordan. But I'll, I'll talk to him again, and maybe he can work his channels as well.
Yeah, it'd be great to just have that.
Okay, great. Uh, any other thoughts? Yeah, I think the, the province and the transportation board need to giddy up on this stuff in lieu of the Rayhound closures. And the Minister Tivina, in our meetings with her at VDCM, indicated that they knew that. So we'll see if it actually comes up. Okay, motion to terminate the meeting. Moved by Ted, second by Deb, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Carries? You guys want to have a two-minute break?